Moving.
Moving.
Just point when we're all set. Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Perkel and members of the public on YouTube. Calling to order at 6:38 PM, July 21, 2020, the July 21, 2020 meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen. Welcome. And the meeting is being held at the, at South Row's Public Safety Complex in the training room of that complex through the, the good graces of our Police Chief and Fire Chief who've helped make this possible. This is the first in-person meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen in four months. And so, we appreciate Mr. Perkel's efforts, the Hales' efforts, and the Police Chief's efforts to, we can actually see each other for the first time in four months. And we're here with a pretty short agenda, but the final item on the agenda are, at least the first meeting for our FY 2020 goal-setting discussion is going to take up the bulk of the meeting. But why don't we move to Item 2, our consent agenda. We've got two items. The appointment of Brandon Donahue as a Special Police Officer. Items related to that are in our packet. And the approval of a new golf committee charge that was drafted and has since been revised by Ms. Malinowski. Are there any holes on either Item 2A or 2B?
I have a comment on B.
All right, Mr. Cyrus?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. First, some feedback that we've gotten in terms of the first point. And the second part of this.
Our duties.
On our duties, "Committee shall manage day-to-day relationship." It seems to me it might be worth considering a small change to that to say, "Committee shall monitor the relationship with the current management company," because that sounds to me like it's too micro-management, hands-on, versus what I think the committee is likely to do. So, I would, I would suggest that. I don't know how other people feel about it, but it seems to me it's more.
How about oversee?
Uh, oversee day-to-day or oversee management?
Oversee day-to-day.
That still sounds too micro to me, but, you know, one person's opinion. So, the day-to-day is what, I guess, concerns me.
I guess my view is, I don't have, I don't have a problem with any of the, the language because I think that, that management, I agree, we don't want to micromanage. But I think any management can be by delegation.
Mm-hmm.
You know, can be by any number of means. But ultimately, the buck for purposes of, of, of the dealings with the day-to-day relationship with the current management company will rest with the golf, the Golf Force Committee. So, I agree that no one should be micromanaging. They're in charge of the Golf Force.
Yep.
But in terms of responsibility for management, again, I think that could be by delegation or otherwise. So, I, I'm not troubled by that term. That's my view.
Okay. I read the tea leaves. I will withdraw my comments.
Any other comments, discussions about either Item A or Item B?
I will move Items 2A and B under consent agenda.
Second.
We don't have to do a roll call.
Roll call.
You do not.
Well.
I know, this is all new again.
I'm, motive unanimous. And so, we will move on to Item 3, which is the primary purpose of tonight's meeting, which is our FY 2020 goal-setting discussion. And I think I mentioned this at our last meeting. I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to have a couple of these types of meetings anyway. In the way, you know, unless incumbents are running every year and always being re-elected, we're always going to have new members on the, on the board, or almost always going to have new members. And that brings new ideas, new perspectives and the like. Layering on top of that this year are two, I'm not sure if there are events like this in my lifetime, certainly not in the last, I guess, since 9/11, quite frankly. But that is obviously the COVID-19 crisis and the aftermath of the Floyd murder in Minneapolis. And so, I think particularly this year, there's good reason for this being a launch meeting to our discussion for goals and planning for fiscal year '20. I think we've got, I think, I think it's going to be a challenging but exciting fiscal year '20. And the other thing is, I don't have any big trips planned this summer. And even if you do, with the remote participation, wherever we might be, it's easy to call and participate.
Yep.
So, my expectation is that we cover a decent amount of ground tonight. Uh, you know, sort of get our respective temperatures, have people make pitches for what they think our, our priorities should be. And then, it'll be a good ground-setting meeting for at least one follow. And so, one of the things I thought about doing is there, we've got a, a number of, sort of lists that people put together. And what I thought is, maybe Lisa's starting with yours to walk through it. And you can talk, and there's going to be some overlap when we get to other people. But I don't want to be rigid about it. And as we get to, as you're talking about a particular item, if something, if someone else has proposed touches upon that or the like, then we can just weigh in. And, and Mark, I think the ideal would be, as we go along in this process, to identify things that, we don't have to take a vote, but, but, but the, you know, sort of the consensus of the, of the board, that this is an item that we want to seriously consider putting in a package of, of specific goals for fiscal year '21. And again, at a subsequent meeting and then subsequent meetings, we can talk about those and what our progress is and the like. Does that, all that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I will be brief. How's that?
Okay.
Um, so, the first item was open meeting law for our boards and committees, how to run a proper meeting. I think one thing Zoom has shown me, it's given me the opportunity to participate in a lot of meetings I may not have gone to in the past. So, there's just a few things that I've seen, adhering to agendas, how to do a proper vote, distribution of documents. These are just some things. I'd, I'd like to see some additional training, and I think this ties in, I know specifically, with, with one that Chelsea has as well, about training for chairs and, and vice chairs. I don't think anybody is intentionally doing anything wrong or, I just think for so long, everything's been done in a silo and Zoom creates an opening for everyone. So, I'd just like to have an item that we can discuss how we can better serve our boards and committees, leading by example, and, you know, giving them the tools that they need to be successful in their meetings now that with Zoom, it's a little more scrutiny than maybe there has been in the past.
And, I mean, I agree with that completely.
Yeah.
And I think it's both, you know, Ms. Malinowski's item, but also the item in mine. You know, one of the things that, that, you know, we have, as the Board of Selectmen has evolved into over the years is a pretty robust presentation of our agenda. And with the agenda, the inclusion of a packet so that days before the meeting, people know not only what the, what the black and white of the item is on the agenda, but also what underlies it.
Yeah.
And I think that's important because, you know, if you see something that, that talks about, you know, an appointment or something like that, well, that's fine, but then you see, you know, who the prospective appointment is, what underlies it and the like. So, I think that, that in addition to whatever steps we want to discuss along all the meetings lines and additional transparency, also talk about things like, like, you know, posting of agendas. And, and along those same lines, you know, it's kind of funny talking about it in this environment, but at some point, we're going to emerge from this and we're going to be having all face-to-face meetings again. And I don't, I don't want, I don't like mandating anything, quite frankly, but, you know, just short of mandating, encouraging all of our boards and commissions to televise their meetings.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it is, I, it just, I see nodding all around. It just strikes me that that's so important. And again, it's kind of funny that, that this, the Zoom world that we're in has really reinforced that because, you know, it's kind of nice. My youngest daughter was kidding me last night because I was sitting in the kitchen with my earphones on, watching the most recent Capitol Planning Committee.
Yeah.
You know, if it's on, if it's, if it's on the website, if it was recorded, the fact that you were there becomes much less relevant.
Yeah.
You can, you can touch base back and, and see what was going on. It's great for a selectman to be able to do that. It's also great for folks just, or townspeople. So, those are a couple of additional ideas I have.
I think they're great, Marty. And I think it supplements the minutes. If people typically want to know something on a past meeting, they go back to the minutes. And the minutes aren't as descriptive specifically as somebody might be looking for. So, I think this, I completely agree with, with continuing to participate in Zoom because I think it gives the public additional access to all the boards and committees. And you never know, somebody might watch a, a meeting and say, "Well, I might like to serve on that as well." So, I think there's additional opportunities.
You know, for so long, we relied upon SAM.
We did.
South Row Access Media to be the sole source for recording meetings. But I think that, you know, we're now, as we're doing tonight, we're being exposed to other means that are out there. So, I, I think it'd be great to continue with, with SAM. I think their production is great. I think that they do a great job. But for other, you know, they can't cover everything and it's impossible to ask them to step up to, to cover everything, but.
And the Zoom licenses aren't going away.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the issues that we've had is not having enough meeting space.
Yeah.
Okay? And now that, you know, the fire station was gone, you know, that was a meeting room that was used a little bit. Now, you've got this room, but police and fire do use it for training and, and all sorts of other things. So, it's not available as much. So, really, you've got McAuliffe Training Room and over at Corderville, you know, with the senior center, to the extent, maybe you can break that up into two rooms if it's small meetings. We don't have a lot of meeting space. So, I think some of these smaller committees, trails, open space, things like that, can still operate, you know, maybe even historical, you know, in a Zoom environment, plus they'll be taped and, you know, you'll have that history. And I forget which one of you already said that, but maybe it was Lisa, that we don't have a lot of that taped history. And we'll continue to have that now in our YouTube library.
And Zoom also gives the capability of, of calling in experts from afar to weigh in on things very easily, that you could never afford to pay somebody to travel there about something. So, I think it's great. Lisa, to one of your earlier points, I think this is something that we could actually do very quickly, that I've also observed various groups meeting now with Zoom who bypass some of the steps that are probably important here. So, I think we could easily get a one-page summary out to all the committee chairs saying, "Here are the things that please remember to do these things in addition to reading the statement at the beginning. You got to vote on every motion. You got to have a roll call vote on it and, and so on and so forth."
But I, but I, I'm sorry, Lisa, I can also reach out to, you know, a lot of, you know, some of the bigger communities, you know, and how do you, do you have any guidance? Because some of them do have guidance that they give their boards and committees on, you know, how to run a meeting and how to run effective meeting. I went up and looked on Maya's website today because they have all sorts of trainings and everything, but I had Lori reach out to them directly to see, because I didn't see it. Do you have a training for boards and committees on how to run effective meeting? Because there is a certain amount of liability, to Sam's point, you know, if you simply, for example, just take, you know, make a motion a second and you never actually vote on the motion and you move on, and then you assume that action is good. And if there's any liability that falls out of that, you know, there isn't always, but, you know.
And we, you know, that's the turnover on our boards and committees as well. I mean, you can't necessarily expect somebody that has never really served, but you're thankful they're stepping up. But we're putting a lot of responsibility on them without very little training. I mean, it's all about tools for me. You know, everybody knows, Marty, I know your process too, and Chelsea to some degree, I guess all of us, but if we give them the tools, then everybody should be successful. We shouldn't have open meeting law violations, you know, a better understanding. And whatever we need to do to do that, I, I don't think it's, it's anything too hard, you know? I don't.
So, I think that's an easy one to include on our list.
Easy follow-up, yeah.
And I think one other thing is we, we also have turnover in chairs and vice chairs. And I think if we could just kind of, I mean, we have some committees in town who run really great meetings. And I think if we could build a model after kind of what we've seen work well and kind of pass that information along to other boards, and I think if we're, if we're able to record all of these meetings, then we can refer to those. I also think, to Sam's point, having, being able to bring somebody in from afar, I think that goes for our department heads too, right? They don't have to sit at a BOF meeting from 6:30 till 9 o'clock to address their agenda item because it's lax on the list. They can be multitasking at home and, and then chime in when their, when their expertise is needed. So, I think that's also okay.
One other point, and it's kind of loosely connected, I think, to these meetings, but these remote meetings, but I'm seeing it now. The board recently voted an update to the email policy, which essentially said, and this is what John Rooney intended when we started down this road, is that everybody has a town email address. Town email is used to conduct downtown business. You shouldn't be doing it off your personal stuff. You shouldn't have town emails sent to your personal stuff. If you want to have your town email forwarded to your personal email, that's your business. And if you happen to reply to a town email, or town business from your personal email, you should be copying your town email so that there's a record of it. We have had issues with certain boards and committees that, you know, "I'm not getting the information. I don't know where the links are. I haven't seen the stuff. Why am I not seeing things? I'm a board member, I should have it." Because they're not checking their, their town emails. Some people are not really very aware of their town emails. Now, Tom, you know, has done an awful lot of outreach on this, but there is still some resistance. So, I'm just giving you a heads up that that is something that, you know, you may have to help to, you know, enforce at some point.
Yeah. And, and you know, and there is, I, I get it though. I mean, I remember when, when I was on the Main Street Working Group and got a town email. I was like, "Oh, that's nice." I mean, it did, you know, it's, it's really, it's, it's incumbent upon us to sort of reinforce people.
Yeah.
Because there's not, you know, in the same way, I mean, I was thinking, we're talking about, I mean, the idea of having a checklist for chairs. You know, I remember, you know, it's a number of years ago now, but, but the first committee I was on in town was the Personnel Board. And after a year or two, I got voted Chair. And the vote was taken and everything like that, you know, Marty Healy's Chair. I remember just sitting there going, "Okay." It's like the old movie to Canada, "What do I do now?"
Yeah.
You know? And, and, you know, even when you're on a committee, you don't necessarily think of, "Oh, that's right. I've got to, I've got to make sure that things move along." So, having it, all of those things make an awful lot of sense. And I, I think we can put together a pretty robust checklist, both for a Chair and for the committee itself to.
I mean, there's, there's a learning curve. I mean, if you've got, if you come on a board like this board, I think this is a good example. If you come on this board, you've got some people on here who have been Chair, who have done it. And so, if someone like Sam or Chelsea, you know, comes on and they watch Marty, or you watch Lisa, you watch Brian, everything and that, you understand how these things are supposed to work. So, you've got somebody good. But if you've got someone who's not familiar with the right way to do things, then all you're doing is learning the wrong things to do. So, when you become Chair, you're just going to, you know, that's how we're supposed to do it.
I mean, one of the things that was most beneficial for me personally when I got on the board is, I had heard that MMA had a selectmen's, like handbook. And I asked Mark about it and I was able to get a copy. And I read this thing through and through. And I will tell you, having a guide, we don't need to do anything that extensive, but just, just having something to explain processes, and I really appreciated that. And I mean, I think we could do something on a much smaller scale for our boards and committees.
Yeah. And my guess is we'll start it and next year, when we're looking at it, we're saying, "Oh, you know what? We should have included this. We should have included that."
Yeah.
And it can get, it'll grow over time into, into something that's been really useful.
Yeah.
So, good.
We took care of number two.
All right.
So, that's, we already talked about Zoom. Updating and consolidating policies and making sure our volunteers understand and have better guidance and understanding of our expectations of adherence. This is something I think that has been on, Brian, you probably know, we've talked about this at all the goal-setting meetings, you know, updating, rewriting. There are so many different policies out there. Some are the same policies, just approved at different times, but you can still find them if you're looking for a particular policy. You may find the right one. So, and again, this could fall into number seven, the handbook for employees and volunteers. So, I, I think it would be great to take a look at all the policies we have. Some of them are probably obsolete at this point and consolidate them in, in one place. And I, I would be happy to, if, if the board is interested in doing that, to, to work with another board member and spearhead doing that. Again, the policies are written and approved. I don't know that there's a whole lot of editing and changes, maybe a little updating. So, I don't think this is a huge undertaking by any means.
Godspeed.
I, I think, I think there's an organizational gap here and that I'd ask for a copy of the policies, current policies. And Vanessa's sent me a whole bunch of them. I compared against what's listed on the website and there wasn't a particularly great match there. A number of them are very old. So, I think that somebody going through there carefully and thinking about, you know, coordinating, rationalizing all those things and identifying any gaps or redundancies or whatever.
Absolutely.
Is, is tedious.
I mean, I think that there are policies that, you know, that are old policies that were then, then replaced by new policies, but the old policy was left in place.
Right.
So, you've got a policy in terms of donations and gifts and everything that follows the ethics bylaw. And then, we have a, we have one, I'm not kidding, we have one, a bylaw for donations that employees can only accept donations of baked goods. Okay? And so, it's, you know, it's a little bit confusing depending which.
What's wrong with that?
Which ones? Well, there's nothing wrong with that, you know, but if, well, lately there is, but, but it's, it's, you know, I think there needs to be, you know, you know, some consistency in going over it. You know, you know, several communities ago, there was a comprehensive policy book for the Board of Selectmen. So, every policy that the board did was kept in a book.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know we tried to move away from a paper environment to an online environment and that's fine, but we still just need to, you know, make sure everything's there and what we want. You know, there may be some things saying, "You know, we don't have a policy on this." Then let's go find a couple of policies that we can use. There's no sense reinventing the wheel on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
Mark, who does it make sense to, to, and, and, you know, Lisa, you love this stuff, so having, you know, you, you know, spearheading it is a, is a, is a great idea. And if someone else wants to do it on the board, but what might make sense is, is, you know, Vanessa's not here, so I don't, I'll volunteer for everything.
Easy, yes.
She gave me a list of what she's willing to volunteer for. I know where this is going to go.
But it just strikes me that, and maybe Vanessa's not the right person, but maybe she is, with somebody in the townhouse who, who also has ownership of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I, I think that makes an awful lot of sense. I suspect that if you mention this to Mr. Hagerty, that he also will, you know, maybe his assistant clerk is somebody who'd be perfect to play a role in this because obviously they, they're going to be responsible for, you know, cataloging a lot of the policies. So.
So, I will say, Marty, so when, when, before I put this down, at, at different times and why this came up was, I've asked different people in the townhouse for different policies and I get a different policy that's kind of the same policy depending on who you ask. And Jim, at one point in time, when you signed up for a board and committee and got sworn in, you got a packet. And in that packet, there was like a code of conduct, but there was an updated code of conduct that the Board of Selectmen had that wasn't in the packet. So, again, it's, it's consolidating all in, in one place. And I thought it was great that as people were coming in to get sworn in, that Jim was able to give them everything that they could possibly need for success.
Yeah.
And I think that's what even number one kind of leads to. If we have any information, we can put all together. And, and online is even great too. I've gone and I've searched on the town website for different policies and whatnot over time. If, if there's a spot on the Board of Selectmen website, we could just, and again, this comes to your repository that we talked about before for legal stuff. One place where people can go to get what they need, that's, that's kind of.
So, I think, and, and I think that, just jumping ahead like you did to your number seven, I think those are two different things. Because, for example, there are certain board and committee members that take a look at the email policy that they are bound to, and they're like, "It says employee. I'm not an employee. So, this doesn't affect me."
Yeah.
So, I, I think it's, I think it's, you know, it's two separate things, obviously, because you're, you're going to address different things for different people.
No, I agree. I agree.
Okay. So, what are we going, the first one was easy. It, it, it matters, you know, relating to open meetings. Do we want to identify this as, as volunteer policy? Is that what we want to call it or?
Yeah. I mean, I, I actually brought a few of the policies. I don't have them all with me. There's like an appointment policy for, for boards and committees that was done in 2017. There's a code of conduct policy. I know there's a couple of different ones floating out there. I actually have a stack of the different.
I think it's simply updating Board of Selectmen policies.
I agree.
Going back and taking, you know, let's put together what we have. So, it's, it's almost cataloging, I think, at this point is, what is the policy? When was it last updated?
Yeah.
And, you know, is there, is the recommendation that this should be, you know, updated? And then, it's, and then it's like, okay, what don't we have here that we think we should?
Right.
And Marty, you were correct. Lisa loves to go and do her surveys and look in other communities. And these people all have this, these people have. So, what are we missing that really we should have?
Yeah.
You know, in our policy arsenal.
The board can, the board can update and we can, you know, whoever, me and whomever else on the board works on this can, can bring them, bring to the board. And then, you know, the board, obviously, I wouldn't write a complete policy without edits and, and comment from the board because we all look at things a little differently. So.
Well, I will, I'm constantly looking through other towns to see what they're up to and what they have and the like.
Arlington, Needham, you know, those are two of the places that I'll go when I'm looking for something.
Yeah.
I, I broaden that a little bit, Lisa and Mark. It seems to me, not only do you pull them together, but I think it's worthwhile, you're doing that, to review them and see if there are inconsistencies in there.
Yes.
So, in other words, reading them and say, "Oops, this policy says such and such. This policy says something else." So, identifying things that we need to resolve in there would be very helpful to avoid confusing people.
Like a maybe a red line version, you know, to the boards, you can see what changes. No, that's great.
So, I'd be, I'd be willing to help with that too.
There we go. You guys trust the girl?
More than myself.
Yeah, I think that's.
How did I end up at this table?
Yeah, that, that would be great, you know? And again, at the end of the day, all of our goals are to make things easiest and best for the, for the citizens and our volunteers.
Mr. Chairman, if we agree to all 10 of these, are we done?
Some of these are like so.
Make good progress.
Some of these tie together. Do you want me to continue?
Yes. No, absolutely.
Okay. So, number four is just basically, it's, it's about appropriation of line items. I've always been a little worried about this. So, at the end of a fiscal year, you know, if somebody has money left in a salary line, they could just spend it on whatever. I think it's, it's setting an example that if you take something out of a line item that's been approved by town meeting specifically, you know, that the taxpayers have voted for something specific, then I, I, I think there should be some, some level of approval or oversight on that. And I know in the past, you know, sometimes a, a salary item has gone towards, I'll just use a prayer as an example, but, but something. But I just think there needs to be some level of oversight for the taxpayer, just, just to make sure that expectation of returning money at the end of the year. It doesn't have to be spent.
So, so just to clarify, at town meeting for each department, most departments that have, that have employees, so you vote two numbers. You vote a personnel number and you vote an expense number.
Correct.
And so, the departments are bound to those numbers for those, for those things. Now, at the end of the year, if they want to do into departmentals or to move things around or things like that, there needs to be, you know, there needs to be approvals for that.
Yeah, it's, you know, at the end of the year, and as we get, as, before the end of the year, as we're going through the budget process, um, Brian comes to us with, um, uh, essentially a snapshot of where things stand currently in the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm guessing that internally, whether it's on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, he either generates or certainly could generate a report that shows exactly where we are in terms of expenditures for each line item.
Sure.
Um, I mean, you know, it would, what would flow, what you're looking for, it seems to me, Lisa, would flow easily from us. I mean, it strikes me that, that, I mean, I'd like to see, for instance, a quarterly report that basically breaks down the budget by, I mean, again, already, it has to be already done because we're seeing it at various times when we're going into the next.
So, so when are, yeah, so this ClearGov budget software that, you know, like I said, I'm kind of a one man team tonight because I was kinda hoping maybe Brian would be here and maybe Vanessa, um, so, um, I, I can't give you fully formed answers on some of this stuff. But the ClearGov software that we got to help us with our budget is gonna be something that is gonna be up on the website and available, you know, to view in real time. So at any point, you know, if you wanted to go up and take a look and see where Public Works is and their spending and everything and that, you get, you know, you'll get a pretty good, I, I don't know to what level of detail that you will get, but you'll get an understanding where their spending has been, um, and where it is at any given time during the year. So it's one of these pieces that, you know, is gonna help with the collaborative process and the transparency between this board, advisory, departments, so it should help to streamline some of these conversations that we have around budget season, um, you know, and, and, and because everyone's gonna have that same information at the same time.
So again, Brian's not here tonight, so we can assign him stuff too.
Exactly, yeah, works for me.
But it, it just, it, it strikes me, what you've described, Mark, that it would be, I just think it'd be worthwhile to, you know, to put it on our, you know, a tickler for every, what is this? This is July, so July, August, you know, our second meeting in September, that we get a first quarter budget report. And Brian comes in with his spreadsheet and explains to us, and for instance, what happened this year with the whole building thing. You know, you'd be able to, you know, somebody would, somebody would look and go, wait a minute, why is, why have we spent eighty percent of this budget already?
Right.
Uh, and, you know, with five, six, seven different sets of eyes looking at it.
Sure.
So, and then, you know, what has been the next one, December, our, our second meeting in December, we get a mid-year report. And just, you know, and then once we get into the budget season, then we're getting almost bi-weekly reports on what's going on. But it would give us a heads up and it strikes me from what you just described, that it's relatively easy to do.
So I think, so until we get the ClearGov up and running, it should be good, I don't know whether you want me to sit with you or to give, or, or just to give us a sense, here's what I'm looking for in the report. Because the accountant is probably the one that's gonna put this together. And so, you know, this is what I want for each department type of, you know, I don't know how granular, you know, we'll wanna go on terms of, um, you know, whether we're just looking at numbers, whether we wanna see what's behind the numbers. So we, we can, we, we can chat about that. I mean, now that, tonight's probably not the night to figure that out, but, you know, I wanna make sure we're giving you something that you're gonna, that this is what you want and something that's helpful.
Other people are much better with financial numbers and the like. I only get involved with financial numbers when somebody's done something wrong with me. So it's a different sort of analysis. But, um, uh, it sounds like, again, there's general agreement that something like that would be useful for us to have.
Can I add one comment to that?
Yes.
I, I think there, there's another dimension here that's of interest. Um, my recollection, my days of your on advisory, that there are the numbers which we certainly wanna follow, but there's also often additional storyline behind it. So for example, this department is gonna have a transition, they're gonna have a vacant position for a while as somebody leaves and somebody's filled later. And so there's money there that, uh, may be available to spend. Sometimes that, that money gets absorbed by the department and spent for other things in there. So knowing more about the storyline, or here's an expenditure that's not yet hit us, but we know this is coming because of some other external event. So to understand sort of what we know in terms of the radar at this point relative to what's gonna happen, we think, down the road in addition to the numbers, I think would be very instructive.
Yep.
I also think, I'm gonna pick on fire for a second, um, if we look at, for example, um, how much we're spending on, um, vehicle repair and looking at it by truck, right? And saying, okay, this truck's coming to end of life, we're spending a lot of money on it. This, if we continue down this path, then we're gonna, it's not gonna be worth us keeping this in our fleet and we really should be looking on a new truck. And, and I mean, I think that could go for a variety of different departments, but I think that's the easiest one for me to kind of think about. And if we can start looking at things like that so that we can make better long-term decisions, then I think getting into the, and I'm a, I'm an in-the-weave type person, so I probably would look for more data, um, on this quarterly report, um, for, for those types of things, you know.
And I think one of the things to, to remember too is we're coming up on some, you know, probably the next fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty-three are gonna be very difficult years for us. Um, capital's driving a lot of that, we're trying to maintain some of the things we do. So there may be a balance, and I mention this only because you used that example, is that, you know, we're not going to do this new vehicle right now because really it's difficult for us to afford it, but we have to make sure we properly budget in the maintenance account. So in other words, if the vehicle is a hundred thousand dollars, we may not be able to cut a hundred thousand dollars, maybe, you know, eighty-five thousand because we've gotta make sure there's enough in maintenance to keep it going until we are able to replace it, so.
But I think, and, and so that's, so that's a, Chelsea's point flows easily into your point, which is, there are probably a list of things like that that would make sense to be on a quarterly report.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So, well, that'll take a little bit of work, but once it gets done, then it's gonna become formulaic.
Yep.
And it'll be part of a quarterly report.
All right. But I think that, I, you know, to Chelsea's point about being more granular on some of this stuff and Sam's point about there being stories. Okay, so you're gonna see the differences, you know, Carla's gonna look at these numbers and say, well, this is really off and that why, what was driving this number? Well, you know, um, you know, the engine had these issues and required this amount of maintenance, so hopefully those stories will bear out some of the detail that you may, you know, you may be looking for.
Yep.
And I think, Lisa, I'm gonna jump because your other, your next, one of your other points, what is number five, um, about liaison?
Yep.
Um, and, and, um, when I saw that, I, I mean, we started this year, you know, it was part of our, flowed out of our meeting last summer.
Yep.
Um, we started having, um, various boards and committees and departments come, come in for reports. I mean, it just strikes me that tying those two things together, um, and I really, again, I found, I found, and I think, it struck me that other folks did as well, I found those incredibly useful.
Yep.
And we did it with the departments, much more so than we did with committees.
Right.
Um, I think it'll be kinda shocking to some of the committees, you know, if we say, all right, we wanna know what you're up to, you know? Um, and, but, but also incredibly informative because, um, we, we're doing a better job with our volunteers.
Yep.
But we're still, I mean, in some respects, it's like, great, you're volunteering, go fly, you know? Uh, and, and, you know, I just think that having them, um, come in and giving them not just the opportunity, the platform, the, you know, to, all right, what are your priorities? What do you think's important in the, in the new recreation commission in the rec world, in the historical world, in the open space world?
Yep.
And what are you thinking about? Um, and so, um, uh, having liaisons with different committees, I think will enhance that and, and make sure that we keep that communication up.
I really enjoyed having the different groups come to, to us and try and, you know, schedule one, a meeting or so.
Yep.
Uh, I, I don't wanna go too heavy with the liaison though. I don't wanna give the impression that we're, you know, trying to restrict their, you know, creativity and their ability to, you know, to, to act on their own as well. There's, there's a bit of a fine line there, you know, we can't be too much, too overseeing. We do have to allow them to do it, you know, do what they signed up to do. Uh, but I think having them come in and meet with us to discuss, you know, the priorities for, for the whole group and, you know, have that engage in the feedback with them, I think.
Yeah, my idea for that is not just that, it is not to, you need to come to us so that we give our okay.
Yep.
On these, but, but it, but it is really to, to, um, unless, you know, someone's going off the rails, you know? Um, and I haven't seen too much evidence of that with our boards and committees. But more so, um, for them to, again, giving them a platform, um, I mean, maybe people, more, maybe more people don't watch boards and select the meeting than other committees, but I'd like to think that maybe they do. Uh, but it gives them a platform for us, for folks who might be, again, we're back in a different world in person, uh, but also gives us a chance to say, whoa, that's a great idea.
Yep.
You know, we're behind you, yeah, you, you're, you're not gonna be operating on an island. You've got the Board of Selectmen's support on this initiative. See, it's a great idea. I think that, that'd be nice.
I was looking at a broader term, Brian, I wasn't looking at my.
No, no, I, I'm not saying that you were, I just.
Zoom has shown me, is being able to go and watch all these meetings now, like, I didn't know specifically that Youth and Families had created this YouTube show. And it was all different types of things, it wasn't just necessarily, uh, towards mental health or something along those lines. And I was like, oh, I didn't know that. So it's, it's more along those lines, I'm not asking somebody to go to a meeting and participate, but we, if we watched, you know, if we each picked certain groups that we could watch, then I think that the, we as a board, maybe it could be just a, a one paragraph thing, we could say before, oh, I watched this meeting and, you know, they're working on this and, and this is great. Or maybe this is something, you know, again, Zoom has been so educational for me to be able to see boards and committees, but we, none of us have the time to go to every single board and committee meeting. Um, I know Sam goes to give it to you, but, um, you know, in general, Zoom has given us the opportunity. And in the evening, I can go back and watch a video that I may not have seen before. So we have a better understanding of what they're doing. So again, it's, it's from a bigger picture, um, just so that we're, obviously we appoint them, so just to have some idea. And there, there may be things, uh, there's things that I've come up with that I, I thought maybe we could do better to help them. Again, it's about tools and, um, so again, it was from a broader picture.
But, but to Brian's point also, I mean, I, I, I attend a lot of meetings and for the, some of the committees that are less visible, I have consistently found that people actually are appreciative of the fact that somebody's participating, listening and paying attention to them. So I, I've never had anybody say, you know, I wish you weren't here so we could do secret things or whatever. But, wow, I didn't know the Selectmen were interested in what's going on with this committee. And I think that's a very valuable communication channel and, uh, you both learn and you can pass information along as well.
And again, it's just, it's, it's about, there are so many boards and committees that are doing so many great things that we don't know about. And that's what it's about. It, it's about being able to, to help them, to give them the tools, but for us as well. I mean, again, we've all from the different boards and committee meetings been able to watch, saw things that went, oh my gosh, you know, that's really great. Or, you know, maybe sometimes you go the other way and go, oh, I don't know about that. But again, it's, it's us being involved and from a higher level standpoint, I guess.
And I'll comment, it's also more efficient, I don't know if folks would do this, but you, you find that for YouTube meetings, you can actually increase the video, the audio playback speed by a factor of two. And say half, half the time on a meeting, but you gotta listen carefully, but you can actually.
I'd like to know how many people do that to me when I.
Are you saying, are you saying there are some people you speed through Sam?
And, and some people, it sounds normal.
I also think that there's reports that are given out by directors to certain boards and committees that, you know, maybe they're monthly, maybe they're quarterly, I would also like to get a copy of just to give us the synopsis of what's going on and, and maybe this goes back to your packet information of them getting posted so at least it's out there, but I'm having a hard time finding, um, those updates, um, that they're giving out. And I think that there would be value.
Which goes back to the meeting packets, for example, if people are posting those, those reports should be in those packets and available for anybody to read, which is a good thing, because those reports are, again, very interesting, often, often very thorough and surprising in terms of the, all the things that are going on.
Yep.
And I'm gonna take it over, put a big sidebar over here because I almost put it down on my list, but, um, you know, was it last year, I, I, you know, I went to, uh, back-to-back courses trying to figure out how do you use WordPress?
Yep.
To do a newsletter, not related to this, but for something else that I wanted to do and still may. Um, and of course, I'm just not, I'm, I'm, I'm not there yet. Um, but, um, um, you know, in terms of you sort of trolling different towns in the Commonwealth, um, there are a decent number of them that do a, for instance, a quarterly, um, either town or select board newsletter.
Yep.
Um, and again, I, I'm, I, I wanna think about it more, but, but the idea of something like that, it, it's not a short-term goal, but, but, you know, maybe there's some, maybe there's someone in the townhouse who's a lot better at WordPress than I am. Cause I'm, I'm great at writing things fast, you know, and I, but believe me, I could fill up a quarterly newsletter pretty easily. Um, uh, but I suspect, I, I suspect that it's something that, that, that different, um, um, committees, uh, maybe even departments. You know, for instance, the Main Street thing, which I am gonna talk about tonight. Has anybody been on Main Street today?
Fantastic.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
It is unbelievable.
Night and day.
Um, and, and my quick, my second sidebar is, and it's, it's one of the, my, one of the things on my list has to do with bikes. The first thing I saw, and I walked down from home tonight, um, were a bunch of kids on bikes.
Yep.
Right, you know, and it's wide, it's safe, the bike lane isn't even in yet. Um, you know, if that's, when I, we get to my list, you could talk about some of the ideas I could percolate around on the bike side. But, um, um, it just strikes me that something like a quarterly newsletter, and again, Mark, maybe there's somebody in the townhouse who's good with WordPress.
Yep.
Um, and, or would like to get better with WordPress.
Yep.
Honestly, if they wanted to get better with it, I think it'd be a good expenditure of money. You could do it at, I did it at Asabed, it doesn't cost a whole lot of money, I'm sure there's even better courses and, um.
In a, in another, in another town that I was in, we would send out, um, basically a, a, a little newsletter with each tax billing, okay, so four times a year. And we would reach out to the departments and say, you know, what have you either got coming up? What do you, you know, a little article about this, that, the other thing. We tried to limit it to, you know, two sides, you know, one page, two sides, um, so that it didn't cost us a whole lot in the tax bill. Just an update, here's some things that are coming up, dates you need to be aware of, um, you know, maybe there was a grant that, the grant that was received by EDC for the micro loans, you know, information on the micro loans, reach out to this person, this phone number, that type of information. And, um, it, it was fairly well received. Um, the only thing that I will say is that when you start doing something, you better commit to keeping, you know, to, to continue to do it because people will expect that of you, so.
Another opportunity though to train, start training people to do more electronic stuff, I would urge to.
Yep.
Well, I'm not, I mean, we said that I was actual, but I, I think, I mean, it's, the ones I saw, I can't remember the towns, but I, but they were, you, you could just.
Arizona.
Yeah, and, and that's fine too.
So maybe, Mark, check and see if there's someone in the townhouse who is, um, either currently, I, I think, at least, you know, a year ago, WordPress was the, was the, uh, the idiot's, uh, you know, program of choice putting together a, uh, a newsletter.
I, there are, I think there are a couple of people, I'm not gonna out them at this point until, you know, to, I don't wanna commit somebody at this point, but yeah, I think there are.
Hey, you're WordPress?
I think there are people that.
Not berouting anybody.
She's not smiling behind that mask.
But just come in full circle because then, you know, the chair of X, you know, if they've got something going, then that, you know, this, this next quarterly, there, there's an article by them talking about it, um.
Gives us a chance to celebrate some of the good things the boards and committees.
And to let folks know, again, it goes back to, I mean, it, it's, it's not necessarily a goal, but I, and it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but, but it, it is, it vexes me, how do we get, um, more people to volunteer in town?
Right.
You know?
More information can help that, yep.
You know, how, I, I wish I had, and I don't have great ideas, you know, I, 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 um, you know, what do you do? I mean, I suspect there are people out there who, who would love to do it, or certainly would be willing to do it, but they don't, you know, maybe they're not, again, if you're not from New England, it's a weird thing.
It is.
You know, town, New England town government is a unique creature.
Right.
Um, so anyway, it's, again, we don't talk about it tonight, but it, it really, it bothers me that we don't have a better mechanism for reaching out to people, um, you know, should we do it through, you know, through sports groups? Should we, all sorts of different things.
Let me suggest one quick thing. What I've done in the past is the Town Census, which is available electronically, actually has occupation there. So I've done sorts on occupation, if you're looking for somebody, for example, I've worked with the Historical Commission, looking for people whose job title has historical in it, and there are actually three or four people who do. And, uh, I think they've found a new member based on some of that, so.
Wow, that's a good idea. There's a wizard on there too.
Six hundred technology people, when we did the Technology Committee, we went through that and found people who had IT kinda job titles there. So that's not gonna work for everything, but that's a great source for some outreach that I don't think we've done very consistently.
And there is a wizard, just.
Wizard, the grand wizard, that's right.
Somebody's job title is wizard on there, so, I'm not gonna out them, but I think that's pretty cool.
So, so, so definitely an item that I think we wanna talk about more is exact, figuring out exactly how to do an liaison type system.
Yep.
But I, I think everybody, again, thinks, thinks it's coordinated with, with, you know, bringing, continuing to bring in the boards and committees and the departments is a really good idea, okay?
Um, I'm gonna jump to nine only because you kinda touched on volunteers, is it okay?
Yep.
So one of the things I, I, I've thought about is how do we bring people in? I think there's a, there are people that wanna serve, but they don't necessarily know what they wanna do. So one of the things I thought about was trying, is like maybe a volunteer fair. You host a forum, you recruit volunteers, you publicize the missions of the boards. And if somebody has a question and thinks they might wanna serve, maybe I'll go and talk to a representative from five different committees and maybe I'll find a match. Um, again, what we're doing isn't working, so this is just another mechanism to, uh, once we can actually meet in person again, obviously. Um, it, it, it would give a volunteer, someone that may wanna step forward but doesn't know what specifically would be best for them, they can actually have a conversation, pick up a piece of paper, saying, oh, what does historical do? Oh, that's in line with what I want. Or go to open space or go to EDC, that, and they say, oh, my background's more in this, wow, I like what you're doing. I like having a conversation, a two-minute conversation.
Do we do a big thing or anything at, um, Heritage Day that targets volunteers?
No.
We don't, I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna tweak Lisa's idea a little bit just because, um, Vanessa and I've had this conversation, you know, how many times we're sitting there? A little bit, just because, um, uh, Vanessa and I have had this conversation, you know, how many times we're sitting there and, you know, she'll say, moderator called, looking for somebody for this.
Yeah.
Any ideas, any thoughts? Um, you know, uh, you know, Brian's not gonna run, you know, after six terms as a selectman. You know, is there anybody, that's.
Come on, Brian.
So, you know, is, is there, you know, is there somebody, you know, the things like that? So there are some towns and everything that have volunteer committees. And that is their job. It sounds kinda weird, cause we have trouble filling committees. But it's a volunteer committee that basically is like, okay, historical's looking for a person. You know, these are people that we're aware of, that, you know, it's almost like Sam's idea kind of extrapolated. We've gone through and we've looked at these people and figured out, these are people we'll reach out to about the vacancies that exist for these things. And, and try to bring you candidates, you know, for consideration, based on what you're looking for. Um, it's an interesting approach, and Southborough, of all the communities I've served in, Southborough is probably the best one for people wanting to serve. Um, sometimes those people then wanna get paid, but, but a lot of volunteerism. And I really think that that's, you know, that, that a committee like that, that's able to kind of do the legwork for you to say, yeah, I've got these two or three people that might fit what you're looking for, you should meet with them. Type of thing. So it just provides you a resource. Well, it, it might work better than a fair, um, and, but, but you've gotta get, gotta get the right people.
Try both.
Yeah.
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 I think there are people in town that have done a great job of reaching out.
Absolutely.
And making direct contact to people.
Yeah.
Yep.
No more so than.
Yeah.
Person who's named for the roadway right behind us here. I think Mr. Wilson just made it a point to get to know so many people.
Yep.
And would, you know, have a great, an idea where that person would fit.
Yep.
Great, then reach out. I think Jim Hegarty does the same thing.
Yep.
Yep.
But look, but look at this board, you know, don't take this the wrong way, but most of you are recycled, right? You've been on other boards, other committees, done other things, and after you're done with this, you may end up on another board, on another committee, you know, it's the same people who just seem to move from committee to committee. And it's very difficult to get the new people, you know, in and, and to get them ingrained in some of these, you know, smaller boards and committees, to prepare them to be, you know, to take some of these bigger spots when they become available.
I do think this type of environment, though, with the flexible, you know, participation, does make it easier for people. So, um, you know, depending on how long we're kind of in this, that, and, you know, I think travel is down for people. So maybe, um, you know, work-life balance is a, is a little bit different, and I think it's probably shifted to more family-focused. But, um, I think, I think this is more conducive to, you know, somebody with kids.
Yep.
Um, being able to participate, um, so maybe we just need to.
But as Marty said, you know, it doesn't matter if you travel, right? Because if we're gonna contin, if, if some of this, some boards and committees are gonna continue in this environment, you know, in perpetuity, so to speak, more often than not.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you're in Chicago and, and everything and that, you know, if you can make yourself available, and you have all the, you know, the materials for the meeting and that, you can participate. You can be an active member.
But that raises a question, can we continue to do this? That gets back to state regulations and so forth in terms of remote participation, which would be an interesting factor.
That's gonna be fascinating. I will be amazed, I will be amazed if there isn't pressure to, you know, sort of, sort of an acknowledgement, in the same way that, that teleworking is gonna become a much bigger deal than it used to be, when all of a sudden, people are, are realized, both companies are realizing that, hey, we don't need as much space. And people are realizing, you know what, I don't have to get up at five-thirty in the morning, I can get up at seven in the morning, because all I'm doing is walking downstairs.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, so, and I, I will be very surprised if there is not an acknowledgement at the state level, but you know what? You can have open meetings.
Yep.
Remotely.
Remotely, yeah.
And it's, it's worked here in Southborough, I think it's been successful. I have heard so many positive comments. People that typically wouldn't go to a board or committee meeting are now actually watching them. And I'm getting a lot of really positive feedback, um, you know, committees that normally people may not, may, may not have gone to in the past, they're actually watching their meetings now. And I think, again, it's about getting the public more interested in participating, and I think this is a key in how to do that. Is, is, there's a whole new base of people that we haven't touched that are watching meetings, because.
And not to get, not to get too far afield, but from a financial perspective, that's gonna change our model. Because, you know, we'll see a drop in personal property, you know, tax revenue. Um, you know, from businesses and things like that, too. You know, we may not see as much of, you know, some of the white-collar businesses, you know, that we have on Route Nine.
Or we may see more of.
Or you may see, yeah, like I said, I mean, it'll be, it is gonna be interesting to see what sticks from what we're doing now, and what reverts back, and then what, you know, what is new. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a very interesting time.
Well, that, that, again, one of, one of my, one of my items has to do with biz, you know, business communications and development.
Yep.
Um, and the people who know best about what that's gonna, what's likely to happen in that area are, are the folks who are out there. And I really wanna make a push towards, um, sitting down and talking with them.
Yeah.
You know, um, at roundtables or something like that.
Yep.
Um, uh, you know, we've got a really, I hope he stays on EDC, John Wood, is.
So far.
Man, he's a bundle of energy and, 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 um, you know, tying in some efforts like that along, again, I'm jumping ahead to, cause I happen to know it's on my list.
Well, I think a couple of mine have come off. So number eight, we've talked about training and outreach already, so I'm gonna take eight off. Um, six is just brief. I, I would hope that maybe going forward, we could make sure, our list of goals are included in every packet for the Board of Selectments meetings, so it's like a running opportunity for citizens and, and whatnot. Either that, or potentially on the website. And I'd like to potentially see, as we work on things of the list that we come up with, have a line item. I would imagine, most times, there's gonna be no discussion, but maybe, uh, say Chelsea and I worked on something. It, it gives us the opportunity under a line item, with it being in the packet, the goals are still forefront. We can say, hey, we did this, you know, go look on, whatever, or we'll, we'll contribute it. Or Sam may say one of his things. But I think in the majority of, of times, there's not gonna be a whole lot. It's not gonna be an every-meeting thing. Um, but it would just be good to keep it fresh in, in our packet as well, when it stays there.
That's actually something I did last year after we had our meeting.
Yes.
Was I just created a, like a sheet.
Yep.
You know, from the minutes of the meeting, you know, identifying all the goals, and just tried to keep a running tally of it. Always keep it in mind that we need to, you know, be tackling something, and just kinda do a cross-off, just so I could see some progress on it.
Yes.
Well, sort of, you know, sort of merging those together, um, uh, Mark, why don't we plan on every agenda? Um, number one, to include in the packet, um, the, the page or two, just the bullet points of various items.
Yep.
And include on the agenda at every meeting. And the answer may be nothing today.
Exactly.
But just a goals update. And it'd be very simple, does anybody have any updates on any of these things? And if the answer is no, then fine, we just move on to whatever the next item is. But, but again, make it part of our process.
Yep.
If you have that list, if you have the list of the goals, so in, in my mind, um, you know, you've got the big goal. And then you've got all the smaller, you know, half a dozen, a dozen sub-goals under each of it. You know, that basically, as they're done, the sub-goals are done, moving towards achieving the larger goal, things can just be checked off. So it's almost like a living document, you know, that, that you, um, you know, can, can basically have in every packet, you know? And so, you know, board members, public, you know, everybody can take a look, here's what we've set out to do, and here's where we are, you know, with these things. And if we haven't moved on these things, why haven't we moved? And do we need to look at this a little differently to get there? Or, you know, have we kind of determined that this is no longer as important as we thought it was six months ago?
So two things, it'll be in the packet.
Perfect.
And it'll be on the agenda.
Done.
So I would, I would also add a formal review quarterly to address Mark's point. Cause if we just say there's no update, and we move on, then we're gonna lose sight of holding ourselves accountable to make sure that we are on track for the end of the year. So I'd like to see us, at least quarter, or maybe just quarterly, review every goal, and just say, we're on track, we're not, do we need help? And kind of what we're at with it.
And maybe we have our numbers reviewed.
Good idea.
Yes, yes, exactly. That's great. And then you can have Aldo come in at the same time and do the legal review.
Yep.
It could be a review meeting.
Yep.
You know, um, okay, so that one's great. Um, handbook, we've kinda touched on this already. Um, I would, again, be happy to kind of, uh, work with Mark and Vanessa and, and try to come up with, um, kind of just some ideas and some drafts to discuss with the board and, and work towards putting something together. This is something that's been on for the whole time I've been on the board, I think, Brian. I don't know how long it goes back.
This is number seven?
Yeah, number seven. Um.
We've had employee handbook discussions. Aldo has opined that that's a legal liability, which I find hard to believe. I mean, many, many towns have these, um, I find my own employees really value having an employee handbook that lays out, you know, basic policies, expectations, and so forth.
Westborough has a very good one.
If Vanessa was here, she could, she's got more history than I do, so we did have one.
Yeah.
And then I believe that, you know, I, I, um, you know, the, the accuracy of comment from council from Aldo was, you know, that there were liability and that, so the, it went away.
Yeah.
Uh.
I would love to revisit that.
I, I agree. I, I'd be happy to kind of work towards bringing something to the board, comparing some other towns, working with Mark and Vanessa. And again, another board member, please jump in as well. I, I would just like to see that, that's been on the list for a long time. And, and I think it's only beneficial for the employees, and, and again, it comes with the policies. A lot of those policies fit right in to this handbook as well. So as we're updating one, we could do both simultaneously.
Now, this is something, this is something I think that's gonna be, have to be done, you know, um, hand-in-hand with Personnel Board, to some degree, because they're gonna.
Agreed.
Feel some sense of ownership or responsibility.
Happy to spearhead that conversation.
So, um, and, and I, and I think that probably since it's employee, Aldo probably is gonna try, would punt this to Labor Council.
Yep.
Because at any time, it's, you know, it's anything of an employee or something like that nature, and that, it's usually, that's the way it goes, so, um.
And, and other towns have done it, so the bones are out there to do this. It's just a matter of tweaking it.
Vanessa has some samples that, you know, again, didn't go any further than the collection stage.
We can work together to, to come up with something to present with the women, you know.
I can understand the notion that you, you, you need to be, um, aware of what you're potentially putting in a handbook. I get that.
Yep.
But the idea that you wouldn't have a handbook because of legal concerns just doesn't, I, that's not resonating at all with me.
Well, the experience of other towns, you have them. They're not.
Well, not just other towns, every business has got one.
Yeah, exactly. It gives you guidance, and tha, and that's kind of a lot of my points, where it's, it's, if, if we give people the, the tools and the resources they need, it makes our job and it makes everybody else's job a lot easier. And you can always go back. I do this all the time. I constantly go back and, and reference something or look for something somewhere just for guidance. And, and again, it's just another tool, so. I'd be happy to, to work with Mark, Vanessa, if another member wants to, to, to be involved as well. Happy to have somebody. Happy to talk to Personnel and come up with something that works for employees and volunteers.
Structurally, process-wise, uh, based on our experience with the Pilot Committee, seems to me it makes sense to have one designated for a topic for follow-up like that, as opposed to having multiple of us.
Okay.
Who might get in trouble with open meeting law and all that kinda stuff, so.
Right.
I think that doesn't stop us from consulting with others on specific issues, maybe, but to have a point person.
Okay. I would be happy to, to, to work on this unless somebody else wants to jump right in. Um, but I, I would be happy to bring something to the board, um, in the fall.
Great.
Good.
And so that leads me to my last point, and it's very simple. Uh, I had asked for job descriptions for a selectman, um, employees. Mark was great to provide them to me, but I noticed, some of them are older. I know Vanessa's was recently done, but I think Laurie Espedese's, Vito's is from two thousand twelve. I would imagine there's been some evolution. Mark, you could probably answer that better. I, I just think it's always good to have an, an updated job description, so. Very brief point and.
How many, wha, wha, what numbers are we talking about? How many, how many employees?
Like, under the Board of Selectmen, it's only three.
Well, Board of Selectmen's office is three, and then you've got.
But then you have the direct reports.
Then you've got department heads that do, you know, um, that I oversee on a day-to-day basis, that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
But how many?
They're, they're just gonna be in their contracts.
It may have a contract.
No, most of them don't have.
But some of them may have already been done, Mark. Like Vanessa's was done not that long ago, because it was done through the consultant for the Personnel Board. So we may find some of these are current. I just, I worry when it's eight years later, and I would imagine, uh, and I'll just use Lori as an instance, cause I have hers. You know, her flow has changed. Um, and, you know, I'm sure Carol, I don't know when the last time that position, a job description was done. It's not something that has to be done, though. I'd just like it to be on the radar.
One place.
We've done reviews, Personnel Board is doing it now that, um, anniversary dates are the same, and reviews are the same.
Okay.
So, and that has just taken place, right? So I mean, we have time to do this. It's, it's not something that has to be done today, tomorrow, but maybe.
Yeah, we, we doing a job description is a bit of a process, simply because it, it gets done, it goes to Personnel Board, usually takes a couple of meetings. So it's probably, you know, from the time that, and, and this board would have to then probably, you know, approve of that first.
Yep.
Before it goes to Personnel Board. So you're probably talking, you know, three or four months, you know, by, by the time it actually gets done.
I was thinking if we could accomplish this in the next year. You know, not necessarily tighten this timeframe too much, but give time to get done. Uh, and, and, you know, there's, there's analysis involved in this as well, you know, seeing who's, who's really updated. I mean, I don't know necessarily that all of them have to change. Some are fairly consistent with, with.
Well, so with the, with the pay, remember, the, when Personnel Board did the, excuse me, the pay-in-class review.
Yep.
Which was done, God, I think it might be five years now.
Yeah, several years ago.
I was gonna say, it's five years now. That was something that was done, is they went through and looked at all the job descriptions, and, you know, got the employees' feedback. Is this accurate? Is this, and there were some tweaks and everything that were made at that time. So, you know, so from.
Well, one thing, it's not, it's, what, 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 what it sounds like is that one of the early boards that we should have come in and talk to us is the Personnel Board.
Yes.
Right.
Because so many of these items fall right into their.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tailway, and say, this is, this is what we're thinking about. Have you guys thought about this? Is this something that you've got, you know, a draft of, or you've done some things like this, and maybe, maybe we can entice them to do some.
Great collaborative.
Heavy lifting, some lifting.
Great collaborative effort.
And Lisa, I assume you're talking about, again, not just the three or four people in the Selectmen's office, but department heads. I'm interested in seeing, you know, the department heads, everybody who basically reports directly to Mark, and therefore to us, seems to me to be a useful group to look at. Have in one place, so if there's a question about it, we can see those things.
And, you know, and again, and jobs evolve. A lot of our townhouse employees have been with us a long amount of time. So as, as positions evolve, or, again, it, it's just for the purpose of having an updated description. It's, it's, it's not looking to, um, increase, you know, pay or anything, but I think to have the most current, updated, you would have to probably do something like that along the lines of somebody retired, or somebody left anyway. You would do some form of updating. So this just takes out a piece. If somebody leaves, you have it, it's done, it's easier to look at.
Actually, Lisa, we, if you think about the townhouse, we've done a lot, a lot of turnover.
I know.
In the last two years. So we, we've had some employees that may have been with us for a while, that have gone from department to department. But, you know, look at planning, look at accounting, look at Treasurer's Office, minus the Finance Director. Um, you know, we, we've, we've had some, you know, the Clerk's Office has seen a good amount of, of turnover and everything, and well, the Assessor's Office.
So this might be easier than with it?
So, yeah.
Okay, so that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Well, one down, four to go, one, one thirty AM is my trajectory.
Is that, is that the projected time?
I have my Mountain Dew, I'm good to go. I'm good for another three hours, so.
Chelsea, is this yours?
Um.
She's the last page.
She's the last page.
I'm sideways.
She's sideways.
What is it? I think, I think it's the same one.
Oh, is it?
Is it the other goal? Is it regular review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're looking at this idea. I printed it.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
I don't print anything in my landscape.
Um, so luckily, some of, some of these we've kind of already checked off. Um, so the first one that's new is, um, looking into regional dispatch to be hosted by Southborough. So, um, this is what I put on here. It's not necessarily going to increase revenue, but it could decrease, um, some of our expenses in the dispatch. Um, and I think, you know, one thing that, um, I'd like to see Chief Polis do this year with his budget, is split it out between police and dispatch. Um, historically, it's been combined. Um, and I think, given the climate that we're in today, uh, I think it does make sense to see if there's any opportunity to regionalize here in Southborough, and have some other towns take part in, um, the expense of that. And we, and we just built a building that can sustain that.
Well, a, and, um, when, when I met with Chief Polis, um, uh, back in the fall, and he started, at least to me, talking about the, um, the additional police officers that he wanted, he started talking about the public safety review that had been done, it's like twenty years ago now.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the interesting thing is that I, I gave him a bit of a hard time about it, in a good way. Because the. about it, in a good way. Because the, from staffing levels particularly, some equipment levels, but both the Fire Department and the Police Department have, have, you know, pointed to that study, um, wanting to be up to, perfectly legitimately, up to the recommended, um, um, standardized staffing levels, et cetera.
Yep.
I don't know if anybody's ever looked at that report.
I have.
There's a second, very big part of that report that's exactly what Chelsea is talking about. And that is that one, you know, the sort of flip side of additional staffing, et cetera, et cetera, is regionalization.
Yep.
And that's kind of gotten lost.
Yeah.
So, something like this is, if, man, and you're right, you know, I'm not sure there's another facility like this around.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a real,
Right.
you know, um, drawing card for, for, for that sort of an approach. I think it's a great idea.
Right. And, and it, it doesn't have to be a town right next to us either. And, and then I think you're also cutting down on, you know, dispatch to dispatch and, and so that you can give some efficiencies with mutual aid and that kind of thing too.
Yeah.
Um, where you're not having to tone out to another town and it's coming through here. Um, and I'm certainly not an expert, um, in this. I just, I think, I think it's worth looking into and, um,
Have you had discussions with either chief about it?
Um, I have mentioned it to both of them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes, when I was on advisory.
And it's been, been discussed by advisory when I was on, seven or eight years ago.
Yeah. Um, but I, I do think that it makes sense for us to, to look at it, especially this year. Um, and, you know, if, if another town or community is in the process of looking at building a new public safety facility, um, and they could save some square footage, they may be looking to do that right now. Um, so.
So, what do you think makes the most sense? To, to task someone like you, for instance, to?
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
I second that.
Um, great idea. Um, but I would, I would, I would certainly rely heavily on the chiefs.
Yeah.
I mean,
Oh, yeah.
It, it, it's, it's
Yeah.
Not just for the expertise, but also, I mean, I'd like to think that they would buy into the idea of doing that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, and you might point them to the public safety study that was done.
Yeah.
That talked about the importance of re- regionalization as well as their staffing level.
Yeah, yeah.
I think every, I think every chief is interested in the proposal if you're hosting.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, so I've, I've been involved in, um, one of these studies, um, in trying to regionalize, um, actually regionalize fire, um, in, in another, in another community. And it is so difficult, um, you know, as to, okay, so where is the station going to go? How is it gonna serve? You know, this and that. Dispatch is a little bit different. Um, again, the biggest issue is if it's not in your town, what is your, what is your face time with the person who is standing at the window? Who needs help? Who needs assistance? Who needs? How is that, you know, how is talking to a video monitor going to? Or are you gonna staff it? Or, that, that's always the biggest question as to how that piece of it works. The customer service piece of it in the communities that don't host. Um, and, you know, if you're operating, you know, um, a lot of the dispatchers and that are done, you know, they monitor the jail cells. Okay. So, if they're not doing the monitoring, now you're paying a police officer at their overtime rate and everything and that to do something like that. So, there's a bunch of different considerations. I'm, I'm, I'm not being negative. I'm just saying there's, there's a lot of layers to peel away, you know, in that type of discussion.
No, anything.
Obviously easier, again, I, I think, I think if you went to the chiefs and you said, you know, would you be interested in this? Um, you know, the answer may be if we're hosting, um, you know, I'm willing to entertain it. But do we want another town handling our dispatch?
I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting that
Right.
we go outside of South. I'm suggesting we
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I wouldn't suggest it.
You just gotta find, you've gotta find a, a dance partner or the dance partners.
Correct. And, and the chiefs are part of, you know, groups regionally that they can reach out to, to see if there's any interest, you know? And, um, I think Neshova has regional dispatch. Um,
Yeah. It does work out there. And so, I think
Exactly.
I could look at those that work and, and ask how did they handle the issues that , uh, people are concerned about.
It's a worthy discussion.
It can, it can work. It, it, yeah, it's always worth asking the question.
Yep.
The pitch to other towns is, is the safest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's
Well, and I think in this environment
Yep.
there's value to that, right? And, um, and, and so I know it's not a revenue generator for us, but it would be an, uh, offset to expense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Marty, remember how you said that we're unique in terms of how we do things in government? People come in here and they're like, I don't understand how you do this. You know, na- uh, what, what is it? Uh, you know, stone, stone walls make good neighbors? And that's how a lot of people are in terms of, you know, in terms of New England and stuff like that. So, it's difficult to, to, you know, people say they wanna do regional and they wanna do these things and collaborate and do that, but it's difficult to pull the trigger on them. So.
Oh, I mean, you go to other parts of the country and, and they're, they're
It's easy.
Well, they're baffled. It's easy. It's, it's, it's a given. They're baffled with the idea that why would each town have its own
These services are provided countywide.
Yep.
Yeah. So.
Um, okay. Next one. Um, define BOS, BOS involvement with employee goals and performance reviews, um, including completion of any outstanding reviews from employees reporting to BOS. So, this kind of, this does kind of piggyback off of Lisa's with the job description. Um, I think we should figure out what, how we kind of flow down, um, goals to the people who reported to BOS or appointed by BOS. And also, um, look at their reviews and how they're performing to those goals and make sure their job descriptions fit within the, the goal. So, I think they're kind of, um, together. So, I think, um,
Yeah. I, I, I think that's a great idea. And, and, um, again, Mark, we don't need an explanation tonight. But, but, um, you know, I wanna, I don't wanna lard everything into a quarterly meeting. But, but, um, uh, everything gets done more regularly if it's part of a regular,
Mm-hmm.
you know, calendar. So, um, I mean, are they, is there, for the, for the various people that, that, whose reviews you're responsible for, um, is it, is everybody on the same cycle for that? In other words, are those reviews all done in, at the end of the calendar year, end of fiscal year? Or, or do some get, uh, get done in a first quarter? Or other? How does that work?
So, yeah. So, if you're, if you're non-union and SAP employees, with the change in the bylaw that just happened in June, a town meeting, all employees now are getting their reviews done July first.
Okay.
Okay? So, that, so everybody now used to be, you know, all over the, all over the map during the year. All reviews now are happening on July first. The only difference to that is gonna be any contract employee
Yep.
that, um, that I'm involved with their review. So, that'll happen as their contract, you know, as their contract year changes.
Okay. So, that'll start, that's starting this year?
Yes.
All right. So, so Chelsea, how does that fit with, i- i- is your idea then that, that, that we would be involved in, in, after Ju- I guess the simplest thing is before July first or after July first?
So, I guess I'm not super familiar with what currently happens. Um, but what I was thinking is as Personnel Board has to sign off on reviews, so do we. And do they make changes?
No.
So, I would, I think
Personnel, yeah, Personnel Board has to approve the increases.
Okay.
So, Personnel Board in the, so one of the things that, that, you know, Personnel Board used to see the entire reviews, the entire review was public. Um, and Labor Council had said that's just, you know, you, you can't have that. The, the entire evaluations are not supposed to be public. Um, they're, they're supposed to be confidential. Um, so they get the, they get the cover sheets for everything and that. But, um, but the chair
By they, you mean the Personnel Board?
By they, I'm sorry, Personnel Board. But the chair, so that is public, the cover sheet is. But the, but the chair will review the entire document, you know, the entire document, just to make sure that there's no issues with consistency, you know, or any inconsistencies. Um,
So, for, for purposes of the new system that's, that's been approved by town meeting?
Yeah.
Presumably that means the Personnel Board will get those materials to review, I'm assuming at least a month before July one? Is that, is that the, is that the
Yeah. In a perfect, in a perfect world, you know, they'll get them, they'll get them early enough to take, you know, to review. Because, again, it's all happening at once. So, they're all happening, you know, in the same meeting.
All right. And, and Chelsea,
So, I
if I'm heading in a direction different than what you
Yep.
So, we, well, it, it sounds like what you're describing is, is are you becoming aware of those same, um, reviews at least at the same time the Personnel Board does? Or am I?
That. And, I mean, in my mind, we should also have input into the review.
Okay.
Um, especially if it's somebody that we either appoint or report in to. Um, and so, so that would be for the SAP employees. For the contract employees, I think, we're the ones that are negotiating those contracts, right? So, I think we absolutely need to have the input into those, um, so that we can appropriate, so that we're aware of, you know, goals. Were those met for this year? Evaluate on those goals. And then we, we are better, um, prepared to have those contracts, um, negotiations.
Okay. So, I, I guess, Mark, this necessarily falls to you to come up with a plan for, um, us being able to do that.
So, um, if you're gonna do it as a board, there's gonna be a lot of executive sessions. If you're gonna
One, one long executive session?
Well, you know, it, well, no. Because if you're gonna have, you know, when contract employees come up, you know, they happen at different times during the year. So, um, I guess we kind of need to talk about how you wanna do this, you know, um, you know, if the board is gonna comment on, you know, wants to have board comment on every employee that, so, you know, to the granular point. So, if we're talking, so the board does a contract for Brian Ballantyne. So, the board would like to have input on his review. Does the board then wanna have in, uh, want to have input onto the employees that work in the Treasurer's Office? You know, are we going down another level, which is, you know, the responsibility of the Finance Director to do the review? So, I guess
So, who writes, who, does Brian do?
Brian does the reviews for his employees, yes.
And you sign off on them?
Yes.
I'd like to see those. I'm not necessarily eager to, to
Yeah, I think that's
be involved, I guess.
Yeah.
I would add too, though, I think there's an interesting dimension, Mark. I'm not aware of exactly how this works, but I think there's a useful input from the customers of folks. In other words, not only we take a look at this, but in fact, uh, you know, these individuals interact with other people out there like other department heads. I think it's useful to have the opportunity for those who work with individuals here to be able to opine on, you know, their experience in that process somehow. I don't think of that as being actively pursued now from what I've anecdotally heard around. But, uh, at least that's, that's what I do in my day job in terms of looking, not only, you know, my experience with somebody, but let's talk to people who actually work with them on a day-to-day basis, who depend on them to do things for them, et cetera, et cetera.
Again, this is why, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
I was just, I see pluses and minuses to that, Sam. I would more depend on the department head to know how they're interacting. Um, depending on who you ask, not everybody always gets along with each other.
Oh, I understand that. Yeah, you know.
Someone may, again, in, in any, even in, in public sector, you know, there, sometimes there's cliquey groups.
Sure.
And I, I would just worry where it's, it's, you're basing somebody's review. Um, and again, for, for me, it's a, it's a level of confidence in your department heads. I certainly would like to see them, and I support that wholeheartedly. I, I think we should have the ability to see them. Um, I just, I worry about having peers, Town House peers, being involved in a review of another
Well, you gotta weight that appropriately and understand that there's some potential for that. And you listen and, and try to figure out how that matches with what you've heard from other places.
Well, Mark, I think I
Longer conversations.
I think I'm gonna kick this back to Mark and maybe come up with a, um, uh, an idea of who would fall into category of, of, of folks it makes sense for us to have input in the review. Cause I, I, I agree with your point.
Hmm.
Um, having input for Brian Ballantyne, who we deal with on a regular basis, makes all the sense in the world. Relying on Brian and yourself for the, the folks in the, um, the Treasurer's Office or the Accountants Office or D W.
Right. Yeah. That's why I was trying to understand how, you know, how far down we wanted to go. Because, you know, um, you know, there may be, there may be somebody that, that Chelsea really wants to see. Cause she's got some comments, she's got some input. But then there were other people that, yeah, I, no, I really don't know that person. I really don't have any. If we're gonna, if you're gonna do something like this, you know, you've gotta go either all the way down the rabbit hole or no way down the rabbit hole. So.
I think we start at the first level and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, depending
But then seeing the reviews, because, for instance, one of the things that, um, uh, that goes into whether or not someone is a good manager at their department
Sure.
is, are they doing good reviews of people?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and so just seeing those without having input, I think it'd be valuable.
Right.
So, again, I think it, I think it makes, it makes sense for you to come up with a just, and, and, and I guess what, it, it'd be interesting to see. Maybe it already exists, but, but this would lend itself, if it doesn't already exist, to, you know, Brian and then who his direct reports are.
Sure.
You know, Karen, then we're, and then we'll, you know, um, and then as we're, you know, um, as we're, we're, you know, um, in terms of the folks below the department heads, I don't think we need to see those
Yeah.
before July one.
Yeah.
We just need to see them at some point. And now, they may raise some questions going forward. But, you know, let's, let's start off with some, you know, bites that we can chew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then see if, I have a feeling it's gonna make perfect sense?
So, I, yeah.
Does that make sense to come up with something like that?
It does make sense. And I think that
I agree.
one of the, and I've had this conversation, I think with a couple of you, and I've had it with Sam. Um, when it comes to the contract employees, um, you know, they don't use the standard form that the SAP employees do. Um, I like to have something a little more free-flowing with them, which basically is, tell me about your year. Tell me what went right. Tell me what didn't. What were some of the issues that you had that you overcame? You know, where were you with your goals? You know, what you got done, what you didn't? Talk about that. And then what are you looking, you know, talk about your next year. You know, what are you looking to do? How are you looking to, which gives, and I get an awful lot out of that. Now, um, um, some of those I do verbally and some of those I do in writing. Um, and, and sometimes it depends on the year. Um, I think there are some times, you know, there may be things that you wanna commit to writing. Um, and, um, but, you know, if I'm talking with Chief Paulus, you know, five, six times a week, I'm continually going back and forth, you know, you know, you did this, you did a great job with this, you did this. Maybe you wanna think about pivoting here or doing something, you know? So, you know, there, there isn't, there, uh, what, I guess what I'm saying is, it depends on the person. And there hasn't been, you know, in my mind, you know, there hasn't been, you know, the, the consistency of committing everybody to writing. Or everybody's done as a verbal, um, you know, type of thing. And obviously
I think there's, I think there's value though in having at least a baseline written I think there's value, though, in having at least a baseline written record in the perform, in the employee file. Not that everybody, you know, has to have a hundred pages written, but some sort of summary
Right.
that goes over the kinda points that you've talked about there as a reference point. Particularly if something eventually goes bad with somebody. Then having that record, uh, whether it's good or bad in there, and an accurate rendition of, this was an issue two years ago that we touched on and it went away for a while and came back or whatever. I think that's very valuable, in my own experience, of having some form of written record there, so.
And for me, a, another point is why I think this is good is, there are things that, when the townhouse was open, I may go to Vanessa or I may go to Lori. I may ask them to work on something for me or do something for me that Mark may not necessarily be aware of. If we're not involved in some level with at least Selectman's Office, when the review time comes, unless we're somewhat involved, Mark may not know the list of things that Lori or Vanessa may have worked on for me or even Carol. So that, again, I think that's, that's a positive for this as well.
Yep, I agree. All right, so I think you're allowed.
Sure.
Okay. Um, okay, active liaison for town departments related to ops and budget, evaluate services, um, provided to residents. So, um, this what I put down, partly because of the process that we went through with the zero and two percent, two percent cut with the budget after COVID. And kind of, um, one of, from an advisory perspective, was we were concerned with taking anything out of the budget that was gonna cut services to residents. So, um, I thought that it was important for, and maybe liaison isn't the right word, but, um, kind of keeping tabs on what those departments are working on and, and are we, are we providing, just for the residents, um, what we should be providing to them. Um, and I think the other piece of that goes to the quarterly report for the budget item that we talked about before. So maybe this kinda goes hand in hand as we're looking at the numbers and the story, Sam, that, that you were talking about. Maybe, maybe that's kind of where this fits in and it doesn't have to be a point of contact. Um, but I like, I like have, having liaison role with advisory and found it helpful to know if somebody was gonna, was trending in the red or, or not and kind of getting the heads up about that rather than at the end of the year.
Yep. I just think we need to be careful, going back to something that Marty said, is we're not gonna micromanage the departments. You know, we hire department heads to manage a department, to do things and that. And, you know, you wanna make sure that they don't feel someone standing over their shoulder saying, why are you doing that? Why aren't we doing it this way? Why aren't we, you know, there's times and places for those conversations, but we just, that's my only caution with that.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if it's done the right way, it can be helpful in terms of evaluating our services and everything and that. But, you know, um, it, it, we just, you know, we don't want departments to feel that, I don't, you know, I don't know if this is the right thing to do because somebody may, may, may think, you know, um, think otherwise.
Yeah, I think, I think my point, though, was, was to create an open dialogue
Yeah.
with them and to not feel like they have to do this big presentation for us
Right.
on a whatever basis. Um, and that, you know, we, that we're open to hearing from what they're working on. And then maybe during the members' report, we can just say something quick about, you know, um, fires doing this, you know, if anybody's interested, or, or whatever they're working on. Um, I just, I would, I would like to see us be more open, um, to hearing from them.
Oh, I completely agree.
Do you, do you see this as different than what advisory does? It sounds like it's the same thing that advisory does. They have a liaison that doesn't micromanage, but kind of asks questions and oversees and kinda comes back. Is, is this along those same lines, Chelsea? I'm just trying to understand.
And I also think it's advocating for that, right? And I think, at, at least for the departments that I was assigned to, um, I, I felt like I could articulate to the rest of the committee what they were looking to do and why something made sense, right? Um, and there were other people on advisory who would, would speak for the departments that they were assigned to. So I just felt like it was a different level of understanding that not all five of us need to
Right.
get into the weeds on, right? Um-
But I think with that zero percent, two percent exercise that you did, I don't necessarily agree with how that was approached by advisory, because we gave the departments, you know, you understand your department and your operation better than anybody. You tell me where you need to make the cuts, which will have the least amount of impact on your services.
Right.
And then to have advisory say, well, we don't agree with what you're cutting. We think you should cut here instead. I mean, that, that just kinda-
I think it was more to understand what was getting cut out of the butt.
Yep.
Could this tie in, Chelsea, with the, the quarterly, like you, you mentioned at the beginning? Is there a way to tie this in with the, uh, you know, the quarterly report that we're looking for on the budget now? You know?
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay.
I think it does.
How-
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think if there's a hybrid some, somewhere that, um, um, because I know, and, and, what you describe with advisory is, is similar to what we did back in the day.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, somebody would be assigned to youth and family services and somebody would be assigned to recreation. And it's funny, because you would end up being, you had to be a little bit careful, you know, because you, you could end up getting, you know, agency capture and all of a sudden you're advocating for recreation. Say, wait a minute, no, I'm supposed to be, you know, uh-
Right.
But if, if we do, if we're gonna have them do a quarterly report and we are gonna have various departments come in, I'm just trying to think if, if in addition to that, we need somebody assigned to also be communicating with them. I'm, I'm not convinced that we do. Um, in other words, if we, if we're doing those two things, if we're getting a quarterly report that sees what the flow of their money is, um, and we are bringing in, granted, it's not gonna be quarterly, but we're bringing in, you know, presumably in the, in the first half of the year, if we're bringing in DPW and we're bringing in the recreation department and we're bringing in, uh, fire and we're bringing in police, just to see where things are, what you've got coming up and everything like that, to talk to all of us. Do we need the additional of Chelsea also communicating, you know, one-to-one with, with, um, uh, the police chief and then doing a report back to us? Now, maybe we do. I'm just, it's-
So I found a lot, I found a lot of value in that, in having those conversations
Yep.
um, to keep a pulse of the departments, right? And, and not from a micromanagement perspective, more of, is there anything we should be aware of that it's coming our way, that we need a heads up on and, and maybe not necessarily have them do a formal report on that.
Okay.
I, I think that's where I, I found, found the value. Um, and also to, so that, to open the lines of communication, right? And not make it seem like they can only come talk to us when they're scheduled for that quarterly report, right? Um-
That's what I'm for.
Well, I, I guess it's something that, that I found value in being involved in, right?
Oh, no, 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 and I, yeah.
And, um, you know, we, we all will have a different perspective on whatever comes up, um-
I agree with you, Chelsea. I did that as an advisory member, in fact, it's very helpful to have that informal relationship with the various departments there. And I, I don't think they viewed it as micromanagement necessarily. And seemed to, again, appreciate the opportunity to articulate their story and sort of practice in terms of what they were gonna do with the Selectman and Advisory during the budget process.
And as a board member, I know I, and I'm sure most of us have, who've been on the board, I go and ask a question. If I have a question to ask, I go to Mark or I go with the department heads. Uh, I, I don't have a, a necessarily, uh, an issue. I mean, I typically get the detailed budget anyway and, and I nitpick through it and, and not afraid to ask a bunch of questions.
Review carefully.
So, um, I, I think it's a good idea. I just don't know how we incorporate it into, I still like the quarterly reports and finding a way to, to do this, um-
Can we do this? Cause, cause we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet again on this.
Yeah.
Um, uh, how many, I'll call them entities. How many entities would we be talking about? In other words, what would be, uh, uh, obviously DPW, police, fire are easy.
Yeah.
Um, uh, youth and family services.
Yep.
I guess senior.
Yep.
Uh, rec, that's six. Who else?
Library. I think you'd like to see library.
Yeah.
Library, EDC.
And again, as a tool to not just, to know what maybe we can do also, to help them way forward to achieve, you know, their charge, their goals, um, yeah.
Or you can just be a founding board for them, right? They wanna talk about something and, and I know that, that they do this with Mark. Um, but I, I would like to, to play that role too. And I think, um, I think sometimes you could come up with something that they haven't thought of before, maybe. Or, or they bring an idea to you and say, so I'm thinking about do, you know, for Ryan, for example, the library, um, obviously they're thinking outside the, or Tim Davis with rec, you know, um, thinking outside the box. You know, I just wanna run this idea past you. I, I just, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm new, right, to the board. I, I don't know that Tim would call me and ask me a question. I, I think I'm just, I just wanna show that we're open to that dialogue.
Okay. Well, let's do, for, for the next, next time we sit down and talk about this, let's get a list.
Yeah.
Cause there's five of us. So if there's, you know, if there's fifteen entities.
Yeah.
Um, you know, only five or six of them are gonna be large entities.
Right.
Um, um, and, you know, see what it would look like with maybe everybody having three that they were responsible for. And my guess is, other than them reaching out to you, you're probably gonna have maybe, maybe one or two conversations.
Right.
Maybe, um-
And this kinda ties in with one of the things that I had about, I use liaison as a word too, and, and knowing what they're working on and, and, well, it's kind of along the same line.
Yeah.
Just to be tied in with that as well.
And Marty, uh, I mean, one, for me, the five hundred pound gorilla here is the schools. Two-thirds of the budget. And I think a huge part of what makes Southborough special and, and important going forward. And I think that historically, uh, I don't believe there's been a not sort of active communication there. But Mark certainly works closely with him on the budget side of things. But I think that it would be very helpful to find a way to be more active, uh, with what's going on in terms of schools and planning and so forth.
I agree. And Chelsea's got, uh, some going into the schools. So she has a vested interest.
I think from information, I think, you know, information-wise, you know, then, you know, that's fine. But I think, you know, uh, you know, I'll just say this because it's on the record, um, and I think it's important. You know, I've been here almost eight years and I've had nothing but a collaborative relationship, which I think is, no, no, I'm just saying.
I'm not suggesting it is, yeah.
No, no, I understand, but, but I, but which is reflected, you know, in the budget.
Yep.
Um, you know, and everything, you know, the school has really been a partner. I don't think we'd be sitting in this building right now if the school hadn't, you know, decided to, you know, um, you know, make sure that they had nothing big come up, you know, during this, during this project.
Absolutely. And I'm suggesting it's important, because the school system is a huge asset for the town. I think it's important to find ways to leverage that more even than we have already, so.
Yep. And we continue to have those discussions. And like I said, I think there's a couple of things that hopefully, you know, there'll be some, some traction on, you know, in the next twelve to eighteen months, you know, with the school, that we can continue to, you know, find synergies that, you know, um, you know, can eliminate maybe some duplications of things.
Yeah, no, my, my, um, experience for a long time has been that the, particularly the Southborough schools are terrific. Um, and, you know, um, they were terrific before and I think Roger Challen now is the, is the new chair.
Yes.
They're gonna be more terrific.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, so in terms of, of having that dialogue, I mean, that, that's, yeah, that's what Roger's all about.
Absolutely.
Um, and, 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 yeah, and I'm not, and, and Mark, I mean, you shouldn't, uh, um, it, it's just that, you know, we've got, we've got,
Yep.
at, at some point, there's gonna be a four-school, three-school discussion. I don't know how that's gonna come out.
I agree.
That discussion is gonna be held. You know, one of the things that I had a conversation with Kathy Cook today about, um, a variety of different things from an advisory standpoint and, you know, what to do from a, from a, from a next capital project standpoint, which may or may not be, you know, the, the, the focus of a community center. It may, may or may not be that. Well, the schools could play a big role in that, as quite frankly, could the private schools
Yep.
in terms of discussion and things like that. And so getting, getting those people at the, at the table and getting them used to being at the table with, you know, man, I've been watching the, uh, the, the capital planning, you know, boy, jeez. If, if we made, if we made one really, really good decision in fiscal year twenty, it was reinvigorating that committee, cause those, those folks have been terrific.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, between ourselves, um, 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 advisory, capital planning and, and, and again, the schools have been great and are even gonna be better. You know, cause you're absolutely right. We've got some tough budget decisions and hurdles that we're gonna be having to confront in the next couple of years. And having everybody at the table is gonna be really important for that.
So one of the con, I mean, you know, so think about over the past, you know, um, twelve to eighteen months. You know, the town has eliminated three of your oldest buildings, the police station, the fire station, and Fayetteville Hall.
Yeah.
And replaced it with a brand-new facility. Um, and, and I know that, you know, if you've watched the capital meetings, then you know, um, that they're looking at the next domino, you know, which would be South Union School. And, um, you know, what, what could happen with that? Um, I think, you know, that, that capital is gonna be coming to the Selectman at some point in the next couple of months and, and asking to do a little of investigation into, into that building and see, you know, um, what the value may be, best and highest use. Um, and that plays into community center. That plays into conversations with the school that Brian started, um, when he was chair, you know, with, with his counterpart on, on Southborough School Committee, that, um, I know the capital committee is now having with a school committee and trying to continue some of those conversations, um, which I've had with the superintendent. You know, just to see, is there, you know, some way that we can maybe do something that makes sense for everybody? So, um, if those, those things do continue, hopefully we can talk with a little bit more detail about those things, you know, as we, as we move forward.
Cause, cause definitely on my list of things to do is, is to, um, to call Roger and first collect on his bet that he lost to be, cause part of it's Yale and basketball. And, uh, he's, he's avoided me since that game. But, uh, but also to, as I said, he, everybody knows him, he's a, he's a wonderful guy. Um, and, cause you're absolutely right, Mark. Um, uh, having the schools involved in those discussions are gonna be really important.
Yep.
Um, about all of that stuff. Um, and they could make, they could, they could make our road a lot easier. Um, and I'd like to think that they're gonna help, so. All right. So we're gonna get a list for our next get, get together and, and, um, uh, each of us will take one and Chelsea, you're gonna get eight.
Okay. I'll do it. I would do all of them.
No, 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 no.
I won't be trying to pawn it off to anyone.
No, 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 no. It's being facetious.
He's on record.
Um, okay, evaluate current operational processes, mailing, data exchange between departments. Um, just see if there's any efficiencies that we can gain. I know I've, I've heard from various residents about the mailings. I think we, we tried to address at least one of those, um, with the transfer station. Um, are there other opportunities, um, that we can gain there? And Sam, I think you have, you had this one on there too.
Right, yeah.
Um, you know, how are, how are we exchanging data between departments? Um, you know, can we improve on anything that's happening in Carol's office or, um, you know, exchange between town clerk and another department? Um, are there better, better ways to track, you know, missing meeting minutes, um, that kinda thing?
And I think the one thing that, you know, and it depends how deeply this board wants to wade in, is that, you know, there are things that, you know, Selectman-controlled departments, you know, will put in place in terms of, say, a permitting software, right? So that you've got all the departments using the same permitting software. So to your point, all that information is shared.
Yeah.
But then you may have, you know, some elected departments that decide, well, I, I wanna use this or I wanna do this and that. And that's where those breakdowns happen and, you know, and we, so we don't necessarily, you know, I had, I don't have really a say, you know, in what a department, so if the Selectman, you know, it's, it's probably gonna be some of those chair-to-chair discussions or things like that, you know, to, um, to talk about making sure that we're all, you know, using the same thing and that way it would, it would make it easier, you know, to share data, to share information on some of those things.
What is the best way, um, and maybe it's just, maybe it's easy, but what's the best way to know, um, um, exactly, exactly how many mailings the town, I mean, I, I guess maybe it's off, maybe it's off the top of your head. I mean, we do the, the quarterly mailings for tax bills.
Tax and water.
That's probably the easiest one to quantify.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um- Senior Center does a lot of mailings.
Is that covered through a grant, Mark, the senior?
Senior Center, yeah, the Senior Center's newsletter is covered through their grant.
Their grant, yeah.
What is the ea, so what's the, I mean, you're, again, you're probably able to do most of it off the top of your head. What's the easiest way to get that in a, in a, in a document we could look at? Or is there an easy way?
I don't know, I, you know, I don't know that there's an easy way, because we, outside of tax bills and again, you know, town clerk's budget is gonna look a lot different with some of, you know, with, with the new way that we're doing ballots.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we're doing voting. Um, if you've peeked in the door of the townhouse or happened to, there's a big blue drop-off bin that is gonna be installed next to the green drop-off bin, which is simply going to be for ballots.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I, and I don't think that's gonna be a temporary location. I really think that's gonna be something that is gonna become a new part of us, um.
Mark, what is, how is rec done? Rec does, is that paid through friends or the, the revolving fund?
It's not a revolving fund.
Are they doing mailings?
They're not for the, they're not for the fall, because it's so up in the air, they don't have time.
Yeah, historically.
Typically, they do. But historically, they do, I think it's twice a year, right?
Yeah, but I think they do a lot of back, it's, it's, it's a lot of backpack stuff, I thought.
I've done the mail.
So you get like a, yeah, you know, you get like a booklet.
Oh, the ma, I'm sorry, yes, it's, sorry.
I think it's twice a year, they, it's very important.
But they also just updated their website
Yeah.
too, and I've gotten really good feedback about it. So maybe they'll just kinda move away from that and do an electronic version.
Tim is very focused on electronic.
That's a good conversation with Tim. I mean, I, I get from the, from the Senior Center and sure, I guess the Senior Center.
Yeah.
Youth and Family Services, no. But certainly, recreation's customers, ninety-something percent of them
Yeah.
Yep.
have to be people who are at least as comfortable as I am on the internet. And it, it just strikes me that, I didn't realize that, I don't get it, I mean, I'm like, you know,
Yeah.
my kids are removed from this. So I don't get that, that recreation mailing anymore, but it, that, that just, well-
I mean, it's really nice.
Yeah.
It, it is, so I'm, I'm sure it's, you know.
But they're also good about distributing it, though.
Oh, they-
The library and the townhouse.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's all over town that you can, you can get a copy of it if you want one. I mean, I don't know specifically, are they, are they still mailing them?
Well, they were, but they're not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they just don't know what they're gonna be able to provide. But, but I do think it's a worthy conversation to have with Tim and say, you know, maybe it does make sense But, but I do think it's a worthy conversation to have with Tim and say, you know, maybe it does make sense to have a few at the senior center so that if there were senior programs that they were having, but I, I just, I don't, I don't see a lot of value in mailing something like that out.
I agree.
I mean, one of my kids read something that was in the mail. I, I, I can't tell, I can't tell you, they don't know what the mailbox is for.
Birthday cards.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because answer clues.
I, I think we've really, yeah, I know in the selectman's office, we've gotten away from a lot of, we used to mail, um, every year for, uh, alcohol licenses. We had packets that were put together, and they were laid out on the table, and you took one of everything and that for the vet, you know, and made sure it was the right person, you put it in their patent envelope, and you mailed everything out. That's all electronic now.
Yeah.
You know, we do, it's more of the one-off things. I've gotta get this signed, an original copy back to the state for this grant, for this piece, for this. It's more of the one-off stuff now. I mail very little, you know, if I write a letter, it's usually because I'm PDFing it and sending it in an email.
Yeah, the one-off stuff doesn't, but, but, but for instance, um, um, again, the senior center is, is just different.
It is, yeah.
I got a ninety-four-year-old mother who, she, you know, trying to get her to use the, I have to put it on the website she's gonna look at.
Yeah.
Um, and so I get that, that hard copy, that's why we did the, um, the mailing this year earlier that was done in hard copy, because there are, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a generational thing. But, boy, recreation, their, their users are kids, and again, my kids, they don't know what the mail is for.
Yeah.
The, the idea that, that we're worried about having a mailing for them seems a little bit of beyond, beyond even belt suspenders.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I think if we can just take a look and have those conversations, um, I think that would make sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, staffing needs, so I, I'd like to discuss, and we don't, we don't, we could add this to a future discussion, but having an individual article at town meeting for any added, um, position. So, um, it would be a change in status, so either an added position or a change from part-time to full-time. Um, because I, I think it's more transparent at town meetings, so that folk, you know, you, you go through the whole budget, but you don't really get into, do we add positions? Or is this just, um, the cost of the services went up? I think, um, so that the residents could actually vote on those changes. Um, and I, I know that this board, prior to me joining, took a position on no new positions for FY twenty-two. Um, I think that we just maybe would ask Mark to go out to all the departments and, and just reaffirm that the BOF took a position, that no new positions are being added, um, and let's just get that out there in July and confirm that that will be for FY twenty-two.
Well, I think, yeah.
That was without a, a identified revenue source.
Right.
Right, so in other words, no new hours or positions for fiscal twenty-two unless there was a new sustainable
Yeah.
revenue source that is identified to support it.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I'd rather know now if somebody's looking to add that, because I don't think we're gonna know a sustainable revenue source now, but they would probably know if they're looking to add any.
I think we're gonna have more deflating revenue sources than, than we're gonna have, you know, um, uh.
What, what is your sense, Mark? I mean, it, it, you know, we communicated it pretty clearly, that that was in the context, context of, of, of other budget discussions. Do you think there's, there's, there's any uncertain, again, I think the idea of, of going out and reaffirming that,
Yeah.
that by the way, we're in a new fiscal year, this is just a, you know, however, communicate with the department heads, that's a, that's a great idea.
Do you want the honest answer?
I'm sorry?
Do you want the honest answer?
Yeah.
I don't know that the, I don't know that the departments think you'll stick to it.
Oh, interesting.
And, and I, and the only reason I say that is, is because, um, you know, there, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, you know, there were three and a half positions that were added this year, you know, um, and, you know, and that was pre-COVID. And then, once we came back to reevaluate the budget, um, you know, the board wanted to keep those. Um, and, you know, despite everything else I think that was going on, so I, I, I don't know. I think the board has got to send the message early and, um, and, and basically continue to send the message, because you're gonna have people, even though you send the message, you're still gonna have people, you're still gonna have departments or boards or committees that are gonna come and ask. And they're gonna say, this is what we want, and we think we should have this. And, uh, you know, I, I think it's, you know, the board's gotta put your foot down.
Well, they first gotta go through you.
They do, they do. Well, we, you know, like I said, we gave you a budget that we thought was reasonable, and then you added three positions on top of it.
Can we just affirm at our next meeting? If it's a matter of taking just a single vote and, you know, putting the message out there loud and clear.
Well, I think, I think the best way to do it, in my opinion, and just to get back to, um, one of the, one of the things that, uh, that I saw in here a couple of times, is, you know, the wrap-up for the end of the fiscal year. Everybody wants to see the winners and losers, right? Who turned back money, who spent everything, who needed more?
Yeah.
You know, you already kinda know the who needed more, um, and that's getting put together. When that's put together and, you know, Brian and Carl and I come in and give you that, I think that's a good time to basically say, you know, because we're gonna start at that point to start to turn to look towards twenty-two. You know, and I think that may be a good time to put the first, you know, the first stake out there and say, you know, look, we took this vote before, that was a previous iteration of the board, we have a new member and everything and that, you know, we'd like to, you know, to do that again, and if Brian was here, I'd ask him, you know, I kinda said to Brian, it'd be good if you were here so that you can, you know, kind of, you know, make sure that the board understands that this is gonna be important moving forward. We're gonna have a tough time supporting what we've got, never mind what we've got plus.
Yep.
I, I think of that message, though, being slightly more nuanced, I guess. I think of it in terms of no net new positions, because I think you leave open the possibility of restructuring internally in some ways and, uh, getting better positioned in certain areas than we are today potentially, so I don't know.
I think that out of it right now.
I was gonna say, I'd be careful of the nuance piece. I would take a hard line,
Yeah, I agree.
and then, if somebody brings something to you and can make sense, you know, you, you can, you can always pivot a little bit, but.
Because I will tell you, just based on my conversation with, with Kathy Cook today, and it, it, it is, it was, it's not anything different than, um, the folks from advisory, and some members of the board of selectmen as well, um, and others in the, in the town government were saying, um, and, and that is that, that there's a, there's a concern about IT.
Yeah.
And whether or not, regardless of any, whether or not we are properly staffed at the IT level.
Right.
Yep.
And, and, you know, you know, we're not gonna, um, shoot ourselves in the foot and say absolutely nothing, you know,
Yeah.
and leave this enormous risk out there if in fact, and, and people seem, who know a lot more about this than I do, seem to think there's a pretty deep risk in, on the IT side, I think.
And that's, and that's one of the nuances too. And again, this, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, I think you should lean on someone like, you know, MTC. You know, these are our technology, tech, you know, technology, you know, committee. You know, this is what we established them for, to give Tom a resource to go to, because you, one person can't know everything and that. So, you know, what gaps are we missing? You know, what is Tom, you know, looking for in the assistant? What, you know, does he see that we need beyond, you know, beyond that? I mean, I'm sure Tom would like, you know, two or three other people, but Tom understands the financial realities, and he does, you know, report to, um, is appointed by the board of selectmen, so he's gonna be cognizant of those things. But, but yes, I, I, I think that's one of, you know, to, to Sam's say, that's one of those nuances, you know, that, that you may have to consider. And you may have to, you know, um, take a look at saying, yeah, you know, we don't wanna increase the net FTE, but we do need to do something for this department, where's it coming from?
Right, yeah, right.
You know?
Some of this falls under Chelsea's five-year needs, uh, the evaluate department needs for the next five years.
Yeah.
Um.
Because I think I'm concerned that we have a long term.
Yeah, and again, with, with COVID, I think we're, we're gonna be experiencing a whole new world. Uh, Marty, you referenced this earlier, with, with businesses and, and how businesses actually come back or don't come back.
Yeah.
Right.
And I know in Michigan, I'll use it, for instance, it's, they're big on shared space. Um, you know, a group of companies get together, they rent offices and, um, conference rooms, there's two conference rooms. They have an on-staff cleaning person that comes in between, sanitizes both, and otherwise, working remotely has worked for a lot of these companies.
Yeah.
Um, whether that's gonna take place here, I don't know, but again, you mentioned this earlier, Mark. I mean, our, our revenues could be impacted by that as well.
Yep, again, they could go up or down.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
There may be law firms that, that decide that, you know what, a lot of our lawyers live out in, you know, fill-in-the-blank Sudbury, Southborough, wherever,
Yeah.
and we're gonna do something. They may, they may not, you know, they may decide that, that the remote system works well enough, but.
Maybe this would be a good thing for EDC, and let's be on the forefront and fill up, you know, be at the forefront of getting some of these companies that are interested in a shared space.
Yeah.
We have all these buildings on Route Nine, easy access to, to everything. So maybe that's a goal we could give EDC to, to look into more.
And I think that, you know, we need to be creative at how we look at some of these things too.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I had some of these conversations with Chelsea and her other life, you know, on advisory, and it's, it's, you know, don't just assume we need more people. You know, there may be other ways to provide these services, you know, whether it's a, you know, um, uh, you know, it's a, it's a program, it's some kind of service that can be provided, um, remotely type of thing and everything, so, you know, it's, it's just trying to be creative when somebody comes in and says, well, we need more people, or we need more money, we need this, you know. We've gotta talk about those things, and I know we've, in the past, talked about, you know, doing zero-based budgets. You know, instead of just assuming I need this percent more on top of everything, let's break everything down and, and, and say why you need these things, and then determine if that holds up for us before we do anything else on top of that. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a heavier exercise, you know, it may be something that, you know, that we wanna consider, but I think the board's got to, you know, um, help to take the lead with that, if that's how we decide we wanna go.
All right, Chelsea, you wanna jump to budget software?
Sure, so, um, I know that we purchased a budget software.
We got it through, yeah, we got it through a grant, yeah.
Okay, um, so I think.
The first year, anyway.
I think, you know, anytime you implement a, a new system, I think it makes sense to have, have some say into, um, how it's going to be used, um, and, you know, working with Brian and his team on what kind of involvement should BOF have, um, how should data requests work, how, how is this going to change our budget process? And I don't know, and I know Brian's not here, so I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I don't know if we have a timeline for how this gets implemented, but I, I do think it should be in this fiscal year.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, you know, I, I think, um, COVID slowed us down. I think a lot of the da- uh, the data transfer has happened.
Okay.
Um, it's just a matter of, you know, um, trying to get twenty-one's budget in so that it can be useful for twenty-two,
Okay.
and then getting departments trained to submit their budgets so that it all gets loaded in. You know, we're, we're trying to get all the hands out of the process, which is, you know, where the, where the unintended mistakes can happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and then, like I said, people can see, you know, Sam can go in, advisory can go in, um, you know, um, you know, um, you know, John Q Public can go and take a look and understand how things are working and what's, you know, where there may be potential issues and everything too. So it, it creates a real level of transparency.
Can we put on, then, for August, I don't know what Brian's schedule is, but, but we should be, for, for not in, for the August eighteenth meeting,
Yeah.
a presentation by Brian, and he can walk us through how it's gonna work.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And so back to your point on the prior conversation, do you think that this budget software will enable us to, to look at year-over-year budgets and, and say, you know, what, what do we really need? Does it give us, will it give us that granular detail on evaluating what department's needs really are? And are we just carrying this every year?
I'm gonna say it's, it's, it's gonna get, well, it's gonna get more granular than what you have now,
Okay.
and, and, and the information, everything and that, but, um, I think, you know, um, you know, for where you may wanna go, I'm not sure it's gonna go,
Okay.
you know, that deep and everything, but, but again, that's, that's easy enough to handle.
Okay.
Okay, so on August eighteenth, we'll go with Brian on that.
Right, thank you. Um, next, I had committee program for diversity and inclusion, um, and Marty, I think you had something similar.
I have as well, I, can we kick that one to the next one?
Yeah.
Because I think it's, what I'd like to do, we're at eight forty-two, I'd like to end at nine. Is that okay?
Yep. I got six pages worth.
And then, and then the next meeting, we can do my list,
Okay.
and then we're done.
Sam's like, I put pants on for that, you know?
You're around for this first, well, who's gonna be, and I'm.
Marty, what are you thinking for a next meeting? Um, sometime in August?
I was thinking, in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, we meet on the eighteenth.
I think that would be great, you can continue.
A couple of weeks.
Yeah.
You're around?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we're just away the week before our August meeting, so that's second week in August, I'm not here.
You're not here, so you're not here like the eleventh?
Week of the tenth, right, okay.
About maybe the first week.
So the first week, yeah, that'd be two weeks.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
All right, and maybe we can do it in person again. I actually think this is a much easier.
I like the spirit, yeah.
You think the chiefs have let us, we, we've been reasonably good guests?
No, I, I think, I think we've been, we've been good guests, I'll, like I said, we'll put Humpty Dumpty back together before we leave, which.
I brought wipes, I wiped on the table.
I think these are, these are just particularly, these, these, these conversations lend themselves to, to, to the sort of bouncing that, that we had, and I.
I mean, I told you, I can't, you know, I don't think any of us can be as effective as you can be in person.
Yeah.
Right, so, so for doing something like this, I think it does make a lot of sense.
Yep.
So.
But again, I think, and I think the diversity one, I mean, it's, 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 it's important, it's a big deal, um, um, but I don't, I don't wanna rush the discussion.
Yeah, I agree.
Bigger discussion.
Yep, um, and then my last one, um, is adopt a long-term plan for capital in conjunction with recommendations from the capital committee, and, and Marty, you kind of echo everything that you had said, um, and I know Lisa's sitting on that committee. I think that they're, they're moving pretty quickly on, on things, and, um, I just think we just need to be supportive and look at what they're doing.
Yeah, and the one thing I'll say about that, and I talked with Mark about it earlier, and I talked with Kathy about this earlier, and, and other folks, I mean, all through the, all through the, the, um, the spring, and then, and, uh, kicking, uh, articles over from, um, our annual town meeting, um, you know, our mantra has been, and, and we're looking at a special town meeting hopefully in the fall. I, I, big maybe, big maybe, in fact, maybe weighing more on the, on the maybe not in the fall. I'm just not sure, I mean, we're not, you know, you can't do an outdoor meeting in, within October. Good, good luck with rolling the dice on that. Um, and, um, so maybe on August eighteenth, we take a look at the articles that we kicked and see, but, but I wanna, I, I just wanna, I don't wanna give anybody the false impression, um, that, um, you know, we are charging, you know, headlong into a special town meeting in the fall without a appreciation and acknowledgement of what the hell is going on out there in the world, and whether or not having a town meeting. Because the reason we kicked most of the articles that we kicked is because they weren't critical for the town functioning from a fiscal standpoint, um, but they, but, but they also were critical for participation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that remains the case. And so if there are articles that don't need to be acted on in a special town meeting in the fall, and we know we're not gonna get a level of participation if we have a special town meeting in the fall, just because of where we find ourselves in the world right now, um, that we let folks know as early as possible that that is likely not to take place. Um, so that's something I think we need to talk about on, at, at our August eighteenth meeting with a better idea. We'll have a better idea, to the extent anything's a better idea these days about COVID-nineteen. But also, everybody take a look at the articles, maybe get, I know, uh, Planning has some articles, could they live if they're not on for a special town meeting, but they're on for an annual town meeting in the, you know, knock on wood, in the spring. Um, there were citizen articles, um, you know, that obviously people take very seriously, you know, are they gonna be okay if, understanding that, that there are incredibly legit, incredible logistical challenges to even thinking about a special town meeting in the fall? Uh, anyway, I just, I told Mark I was gonna preview that tonight. I just think that, that I don't want it lingering out there that there's definitely gonna be a special town meeting in the fall. I'm incredibly skeptical about our ability to pull that off.
So one thing on the capital piece I just wanna mention, um, and because I've had conversations with, with the chair, um, he's really difficult. So, um.
Oh, I thought you meant the chair of the board of selection, I was gonna agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, um, no, but, but my, you know, from a personal, from a selfish point of view, as, as, you know, the, the, you know, the leader for the finance team, my goal is to have capital committee come up with recommendations, you know, that, um, that basically, you know, that, that are, that are, you know, make a lot of sense, have the best, you know, the best value, the best everything, and then just have that number plopped into the budget at the beginning, rather than trying to sacrifice capital halfway through the process at the end, saying, you know what, we really need this, I guess we're gonna let that COVID on Northborough Road go again, you know, the plate's holding up, you know, five years now, it's been, it's been good. Um, you know, so I'm hoping that, you know, and, and I know that, um, you know, Jason feels that way about capital as well, is, you know, they'd like to come up with a plan and say, here is the capital plan, these are the numbers that, you know, that, that should be inserted every year for capital and, and then we don't have to really touch it so much except when things change, when emergencies come up, when something happens, we don't anticipate. And, um, that would really make the budgeting process a lot better to have that number early rather than have it dumped in a little bit late and then, because again, we never sacrifice operations for capital, we always sacrifice, sacrifice it the other way around. So.
Marty, might it be useful to see if, um, the moderator is available for that discussion on the eighteenth?
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah, that's, you know, that's a very good idea.
And I know that there were, there were information sessions that were canceled by Planning Board and that kind of thing. So what kind of leeway do they need in order to, I mean, I would think that they want to get, set up their information out and somehow hold some forums, whether virtually or however, um, how much time do they need to know whether we're actually going to do it?
Yeah, and, and obviously the EDC has been, has been pushing ahead with the downtown initiative.
Yeah.
And again, none of this is to diminish any of that work or any of those, it's just that, that we've got to be realistic about whether or not it's even.
But you don't want to shortchange it either, to your point, you don't want to say, okay, we've got a hundred and two people.
Right.
And those are making decisions for the downtown, those are, you know, those are the number of people that are making very important decisions on some of these bylaws, you know, and zoning issues.
Simply because others aren't comfortable for their safety and health.
Yeah, exactly.
And so anyway, I told Mark I was going to, I was going to, um, I was going to float that tonight because the, the, the earlier, we are, we are having a conversation that it, that, that the idea of a, of a, of a special town meeting in the fall seemed like a really good idea when it seemed like normalcy might be
Yeah.
around a corner and now, who knows? I mean, I, it, it's kind of amazing. I, I mean, you know, I work in downtown Boston and I do not think I will be back in my office in twenty-twenty. I just, I don't think it's going to happen. It's stunning to me.
My, my company is at twenty-one.
Yeah, it's just stunning.
Yeah, it's not crazy.
So.
Mark, does the eighteenth give you enough time to reach out to the stakeholders on some of the articles to kind of judge, um?
Yeah, I mean, the, so, you know, uh, you know, a lot of them are CPA.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are planning, so really, you know, planning and zoning pieces, yeah, so.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I don't know that, um, um, I don't know it's a heavy lift.
Okay.
Again, you've got two citizen petitions, you know, so, you know, can see, can see where those lay, but, um.
Okay, thank you.
You okay holding yours till the next meeting, Sam?
Uh, yeah.
Or you want to try to cover it in the next ten minutes?
I think, I think, you know, well, I can't say for all of Sam's subsets, but I think in just trying to recall your list, you know, a lot of, you know, there was some overlap with
Sure.
the things that have been discussed, so.
We, we will lead with this at, uh, what is two weeks, is it August? What?
Before.
On August fourth?
August fourth?
Yeah.
Same time, same place, ideally.
Yeah, well, hopefully same place.
Yeah.
Are you, will, will you talk to the chiefs?
I, I would, I would suggest, you know, um, possibly you doing that.
Okay.
I think, I'm hap, I'm happy to do it, but I think it
No, I will do it.
Carries, carries a little more coming, coming from you.
I will wander down here tomorrow, I will do it in person.
Yep.
Um, well, um, this is a lot of ground, um, it really was.
I think this was really productive.
Very, very helpful, yeah.
Um, and I will just tell you, does anybody, did anybody look at my list?
Yeah, I did.
I did, yeah.
Does anybody know what number ten is?
No.
It's, it's up on the three-hundred year anniversary.
It is.
Oh, there you go.
I was looking.
It's right behind you. Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, well, it is, um, I, I
Wow.
I, anybody who went to, you know, middle schoo, middle school in, in Massachusetts, you know, knows, the eighteenth of April in seventy-five, Harley man is not alive, blah, 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 and we all know that poem. But I was looking at, I think it was Lexington, Town of Lexington's website, and they had their, they've got their two-fiftieth coming up
Yep.
in twenty-twenty-five for the Battle of Lexington and Concord.
Yep.
And I went, oh, that's just a couple of years, and I went, wait a minute, we don't have a committee.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, and, and, you know, we're only going to turn three-hundred once, so.
Well, Mr. Shea, does this mean you're going to stay on until at least twenty-twenty?
I'm apparently in.
He'll be in the middle as anyone. He'll be in the middle of his forty-first.
Do we want to look at six o'clock or do you want to stick with six-thirty for the fourth?
I'm fine with six, that doesn't matter.
I can do six.
I could do either, yeah.
Yeah, let's do six.
Six and a six.
If it runs a little bit longer, we'll have extra time, so.
Yeah, because we will finish, finish with, with Sam's line. Are you, are you going to do one, Brian, or are you all set?
Uh, you know what, in all honesty, uh, Mark had forwarded the copies of previous ones.
Yep.
And again, I come from a time, the first time we did goal setting, we didn't even[1559.05]